Good morning. This truly is a beautiful day. A day where we get to explore an understandably difficult and in many ways dehumanizing history, but with the goal of finding the beauty in the humans who unnecessarily lost their lives simply because of their existence. And also prompt us and compel us and encourage us to strive for the beauty in this world and in the beauty of humanity. And we've started simply by you all being here. So I truly thank you for your presence in this sacred space. So I am Dr. David Fauconlay. I am honored to serve as Chair of the Maryland Lynch and Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and I am honored to call to order this public hearing for Frederick County in the state of Maryland. At this time, I call upon Commissioner Nicholas Creary to cite the specific state statute that prompts this hearing and the commission of this body's work. And after the recitation, well, not recitation, but the reading.
Do you know about heart?
I don't know about heart.
Okay, so not recitation. Not recitation, but the reading of the statute, I will just provide a little further context behind the work of the MLTRC, and you can just say MLTRC for short. Thank you.
Whereas lynching, or the extralegal murder of an individual in an act of mob violence, is a violation of the rights to due process and equal protection of the law. And whereas at least 38 African-Americans were lynched by white mob in Maryland between 1854 and 1933. And whereas no person was ever tried, convicted, or otherwise brought to justice for participating in these racially motivated lynchings. And whereas various state, county, and local government entities colluded in the commission of these crimes and conspired to conceal the identities of the parties involved. And whereas these crimes far exceeded any notion of justice, just retribution, or just punishment, but were intended to terrorize African-American communities and force them into silence and subservience to the ideology of white supremacy. And whereas no victim's family or community ever received a formal apology or compensation from state, county, or local government entities for the violent loss of their men. And whereas restorative justice requires a full knowledge, understanding, and acceptance of the truth before there can be any meaningful reconciliation. Now therefore, be it enacted by the General Assembly of Maryland that there is a Maryland Lynch and Truth and Reconciliation Commission. The commission consists of the following members. The Chair of the Commission on Civil Rights, or the Chair's designee. The State Archivist, or the State Archivist's designee. The Director of the Maryland Historical Trust, or the Director's designee. The Chair of the Commission on African-American History and Culture, or the Chair's designee. The President of the Maryland State Conference of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, or the President's designee. The Executive Director of the Reginald F. Lewis Museum of African-American History and Culture, or the Executive Director's designee. The President of the National Great Blacks and Wax Museum, or the President's designee. The President of the Maryland Historical Society, or the President's designee. The President of the Maryland Lynch Memorial Project, or the President's designee. The President of the Director of the Lily Mae Carol Jackson Civil Rights Museum, or the Director's designee. One historian from each of the following historically black colleges and universities appointed by the President of the institution. Bowie State University, Coppin State University, Morgan State University, and the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. And four members of the public nominated by members of the commission and appointed by the Governor. The Chair of the Commission shall be elected from among the members of the commission. Bowie State University, in consultation with the Maryland Lynch and Memorial Project, shall provide staff for the commission. The Office of the Attorney General shall provide a staff member to assist the commission. The staff member provided under sub-paragraph one of this paragraph may issue a subpoena for the attendance of a witness to testify or for the production of documents in connection with any investigation or hearing conducted by the commission under this section. A member of the commission may not receive compensation as a member of the commission, but is entitled to reimbursement for expenses under the standard state travel regulations as provided by the state budget. And I think, what, the commission shall hold regional hearings open to the public in areas in which a lynching of an African-American by a white mob has been documented, shall receive from the public, including those from the families and communities affected by racially motivated lynchings, recommendations for addressing, engaging, and reconciling communities affected by racially motivated lynchings, including the erection of memorial plaques or signage at or near the sites of the racially motivated lynchings, and make recommendations for addressing the legacy of lynching that are rooted in the spirit of restorative justice. In the hearings conducted under subsection F of this section, the commission may research cases of racially motivated lynching for which there is no documentation, should those cases be brought to the commission's attention, and the involvement of state, county, and local government entities and relevant news media in cases of racially motivated lynching. Honored before September 1st, 2020, the commission shall submit an interim report of its findings and recommendations to the Governor and in accordance with state government article, the General Assembly. Honored before December 1st, 2021, the commission shall submit a final report of its findings and recommendations to the Governor and in accordance with the state government article to the General Assembly. And be it further enacted, that this act shall take effect on June 1st, 2019. It shall remain in effect for a period of three years and one month at the end, and at the end of June 30th, 2022, 2022, this act with further action required by the General Assembly, with no further action required by the General Assembly, shall be abrogated and of no further force and effect, approved by the Governor April 18th, 2019.
Thank you, Commissioner Creary, and to provide some context. We are still here, well, after 2022, so we have been granted two extensions to complete our work, so our official sunset is June 30th, 2026. So we have a little bit more time to continue to do the necessary work. Thank you again, Commissioner Creary. So I want to do just a little bit of housekeeping before we move on with our proceedings. As you will see, over to my left in that corner are the bathrooms. Please use as you need to. We have some refreshments courtesy of Discover Me, Recover Me, so hopefully that you can remain nourished during our time this morning. So if you are a fan of Utz, regular barbecue, honey barbecue, an array of cookies, some juice, orange, and apple, and some water, then this is the place for you. No charge, you're welcome. But please, use, please take as you, as you would like. I would like to acknowledge Living and Growing. Could you please just quickly stand, raise your hands? So it is very important in this sacred space to acknowledge the navigation of emotions that will happen during our time here. Living and Growing are here intentionally to help you with that navigation if you so choose. There is a space within the school that is comfortable, that is private, and if you so choose to have that navigation with Living and Growing, they are here for you. So thank you for being here, and again, if you need it, please use it. That is why we brought them. Thank you. Yes. Clap it up for good mental health. Yes, good social emotional health, no doubt, no doubt, no doubt. All right, I will now go through the code of conduct as well as our protocol for testimony and to give a brief overview of our time here. Members of the public had the opportunity to submit testimony via email to mltrc@maryland.gov prior to today's hearing. During the hearing, questions and comments from members of the public here in this space will be collected by volunteers. Please provide your name and your organizational affiliation, if any, and please limit your comment or question to no more than three sentences. Questions and comments, as well as live testimony, must be limited to the topic of discussion for today's hearing. If your comment or question is off-topic, it will not be included in the hearing or your live testimony will be ended. Comments, questions, and testimony should be presented with decorum and the respect appropriate for conducting this public hearing. Any comments or questions containing obscene language or language inciting imminent violence will not be addressed, and any live testimony containing such language will end. Finally, please note that members of the media may be present during today's hearing, and as such, public comments, questions, and testimony may be broadcast or printed by news outlets. I trust that we are all in this space for truth. I trust that we are all in this space for healing. I trust that we are all in this space for humanity. If that is the case, you may stay. If that is not the case, I humbly ask you to leave. So we good? All right. Thank you for your humanity. Thank you for your charge of healing. Thank you for your charge of truth. So a brief overview of our time today. We are here to honor and to tell the story of the three confirmed racial terror lynchings in Frederick County. James Carroll in 1879, John Biggus in 1887, and James Bowen in 1895. So as part of our time here, we will have the history of these three cases, these three men, told by members of the Frederick County community, as well as commissioners, as appropriate. We will also have the testimony of descendants of the racial terror lynching victims speak. If I may, those descendants of racial terror lynching victims in Frederick County, could you just please briefly raise your hand? I am grateful for everyone that is here, but I am not lying to say I am most grateful that you are here. This is your opportunity to share your truth. That is what this platform is for. So thank you again for your presence. Very quickly, before we get to remarks from Willie Mahone, President of the Frederick County NAACP, I would just like for my fellow commissioners to introduce themselves, as well as staff, to just quickly acknowledge yourselves. So I will go to my immediate left, starting again with myself, Dr. David Fauconlay, honored to serve as Chair, and I represent the National Great Blacks and Wax Museum. So if you would, just give your name and affiliation and any committees that you serve.
I'm Nicholas Creary. I represent the Maryland Lynch Memorial Project, and I serve as the Chair of the Reconciliation Committee.
David Armenti, representing the former Maryland Historical Society, now known as the Maryland Center for History and Culture, and I also serve as the Chair of the Research Committee.
Lindsay Baker, representing Maryland Humanities.
Amy Millen, I'm a member of the public at large, and I'm the Chair of the Logistics Committee.
All right, thank you very much to staff. If you can just quickly acknowledge yourselves. So shout out Trish Boyle, our project managers. Shout out Stephanie Thompson, our former project manager. Much gratitude to you all. They are the backbone of this commission. We aren't getting anything done without them, so it is important to give acknowledgement where acknowledgement is due. Yeah. As well as the other backbone of the MLTRC, the staff from the Office of the Attorney General, would you just quickly raise your hand? Acknowledging, yup, Trish, yup, Krista McFarland, Sophia Sique, thank you very much. Thank you so much for your support and for your guidance. Appreciate you. Sometimes it's good to have the law on your side. I will just say that right now. Okay, let's keep it serious. So at this time, I would like to bring up for some brief remarks and acknowledge Mr. Willie Mahone and a bio for Mr. Mahone, because it is definitely warranted and earned. Mr. Willie Mahone attended local Frederick Public Schools and Towson State University. He received his J.D. from the University of Maryland School of Law in 1978, and a Master's of Arts in Teaching from Antioch School of Law in 1982. Mr. Mahone worked as a legal services attorney in the Housing Division from 1978 through 1980, and as a clinical law instructor at any Antioch School of Law from 1980 to 1982. He was a political science adjunct professor at Frederick Community College in the 1980s. He practiced law in the areas of employment, civil rights, domestic, consumer, housing, and criminal defense through 2016. Mr. Mahone is co-founder of Public Justice, Inc., out of Baltimore, Maryland, shout out Baltimore, Frederick Citizens Against the Klan, Concerned Citizens for Racial Justice, Frederick County African-American Chamber of Commerce, Parents Association for African-American Students, and he is currently the President of the Frederick County NAACP. So it is my honor to acknowledge at this time Mr. Willie Mahone for some brief remarks.
First, I want to thank everybody for the applause that they gave me before I say anything. Therefore, I don't feel as obligated to say something of substance. I want to take this opportunity to welcome to this session the Frederick County Maryland Lynch and Truth and Reconciliation Commission. The very fact that you have devoted time to this matter on Saturday morning, a test to the significance of this event, we assure you will find the event and the program both informative and inspirational. And in light of the desire to quickly move through the program, I will reserve any further comments until later. At this time also, I would introduce one of our presenters, the moderators, and that person is, I hope everybody heard it. No one's ever said that I can talk proud of that, particularly when I do look at staring and going. Our first presenter will be Veronica Lowe. She's making a presentation under the historical aspect of our program here. Ms. Lowe is currently third as Deputy Director of Labor and Employee Relations for MDOT-MTA. Ms. Lowe hosts an MBA in Leadership Studies and a BBA in Human Resources Management.
Veronica, Ms. Lowe is also a member of Alpha Kappa, Alpha Kappa, Alpha Sorority. And Asha, I don't want you all to just jump up and start clapping, because that's who she is. And she's a member of several boards and commissions. She is, she is the former Director of Transportation for Frederick County Public Schools, and she is currently a candidate running for the Frederick County Public Schools Board of Education. With that, I would defer to Veronica Lowe.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me this morning. The lynchings in Frederick County were horrible crimes of racial murder, the perpetrators of which were never investigated, arrested, or brought to justice. This atrocity that were, that were buried in Frederick County's history so that most people living here in Frederick would not, would not know about it. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Dean Heron. Dr. Heron is the retired Chief Historian of the National Capital Region of the National Parks Service in Washington, DC. He is a graduate of Brown University and the Catoctin Center of, sorry, Regional Studies. He is a graduate of Brown University and received his Master's Degree and his Doctorate Degree in American History from the University of Delaware. He is a member of ARC and the Frederick Chapter of NAACP.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Everybody can hear me? Great. And if you can switch our slides over. Thank you all for coming. I'm Dean Heron. And Mr. Mahone, thank you very much for your opening remarks. Thank you, Commissioners, for being here, and I will reiterate, thank you so much for holding this hearing in Frederick County. We appreciate the opportunity to get this truth out. And I'd like to thank Crosby Blair, there he is, he's with Lincoln, and he has been so incredibly generous and nice in letting us use the space and setting it up for us. And I also want to thank Lincoln for, this is the 100th anniversary of Lincoln School. It was the first public high school for African-Americans in the county. And if you would, if you are a graduate of Lincoln at any stage, could you just raise your hand? I know there are more of you. Great, thank you very much. We were delighted when we found out we could use this space, so thank you. All right, and you might need to get the lights. Great, thank you. Can everyone see that all right?
Yes.
All right, good, thank you. Oh, and do I have a, I think a clicker will work or not? No, you'll have to do it. Okay, all right, well, thank you, Sarah. The history of racial lynching in America, the illegal killing of African-American men and women, is one of the darkest chapters in the history of this country. One study found that between 1877, when the United States removed federal troops from the South at the end of the Reconstruction Era in 1950, there were over 4,300 lynchings of African-Americans in the United States, vast majority in 12 southern states. In that same time period, as was mentioned earlier, 38 of these extrajudicial killings occurred in the state of Maryland. These murders were widespread in the state, taking place in 18 of the state's 24 counties. In Frederick County here, there were three lynchings, one in Point of Rocks in 1879, and two in Frederick, one in 1887, and one in 1895. Slide, please. Lynching is a tough topic. It's a painful and horrendous story. People of all races don't want to dwell on what happened, but we need to dwell on this story so as to know this story. This is our history, and what I'm going to tell you today is Frederick County's history, and there is no denying it, even though we live in a very scary age in which people are opposed to truthful history. Lynching, otherwise known as murder, affected everyone in the community, black and white. This flag was flown from the headquarters of the NAACP office in New York City after reports of lynchings. Lynching was part of a racist, white supremacist worldview that many in our community believed in and many, many others tolerated. And sadly, many still believe in and many still tolerate. We cannot understand, there is no way to understand current racial issues if we don't know this tragic story. And for much too long, this has been hidden in Frederick County's history, little discussed and little known. Before discussing the three lynchings in Frederick County, I want to give you a little historical context. Before the abolition of slavery, Frederick County was a slave county and a slave state. Slide, please. This chart shows the number of enslaved and free African-Americans in Frederick County as shown by the Federal Census between 1790 and 1860. At slavery's peak in Frederick County in 1820, 6,685 men, women, and children were enslaved in our county. And let me say that number again. 6,685 men, women, and children were held in bondage and considered nothing more than property. In 1860, in the last population census before emancipation, the number of people enslaved in the county had dropped to 3,243, and in fact, there were more free African-Americans in the county than enslaved. Now, free, of course, is a very relative term, and even free African-Americans in that time had many restrictions placed on them by a white racist society. They were not free as in free whites. Slide, please. As many of you probably know, slavery was not ended in Maryland by the Emancipation Proclamation. That only applied to states that were then in rebellion to the United States, and Maryland had been loyal to the Union. Slide. More than a year and a half passed after the Emancipation Proclamation, before a new state constitution was adopted in Maryland that ended slavery on November 1, 1864. Slide, please. The Confederacy was defeated next year, due in part to efforts of many young black men from Frederick County who had joined the Army and fought in the USCT, the United States Color Troops, and also in the Navy. Slide. Celebrating freedom, the first emancipation celebration in Frederick was held on August 23rd, 1865, with over 3,000 people in attendance. In the first few years after the Civil War, many African-Americans and their supporters thought it just might be possible that they could become full and equal citizens of this country, with all the rights and opportunities denied them in the past. Slide, please. But in the late 1860s and in the 1870s, conservative politicians regained power throughout the South and here in Maryland and in Frederick County, and laws and policies were soon enacted that trampled on the rights and freedoms of African-Americans for decades to come. Slide. Racial violence was one element of Jim Crow society that whites used in their efforts to keep African-Americans, quote, "in their place." Lynching was one of the tactics of racial violence, and here in Frederick County, mobs of white people murdered three young African-American men by lynching. This is a disturbing and horrific story. I'm very mindful that we have descendants here with us today, and I don't want to cause any unnecessary anguish, but we, the current residents of Frederick County, we need to know the whole unvarnished story so that we do not forget this travesty of justice, and especially so that we do not let others forget. Slide, please. The first lynching occurred in Point of Rocks, in the southern part of Frederick County, near the Potomac River. On the evening of April 14th, 1879, in nearby Lixville, which is shown on the right side of this map, this is an 1873 map, and I think that area is now called Tuscarora. Regina Thomas, the wife of a Chesapeake and Ohio Canal boat operator, was allegedly assaulted and raped. Her husband, Richard Thomas, who had been away that evening, claimed the next day that the culprit was James Carroll, a young black man. Carroll was 24 years old and had been in Lixville for about a year, working on the canal as well as on local canal as well as on local farms. He had been born enslaved near Smithsburg in Washington County. His parents were dead and he had been raised by a Dr. Bishop in Smithsburg. A manhunt ensued and Carroll was eventually located in Georgetown on Thursday, April 17th, three days after the alleged attack. Carroll, who had worked on canal boats, said he had left Lixville to earn money on a boat going to Georgetown. Throughout his ordeal, he professed his innocence. On the same day that he was arrested, Carroll was placed on a train accompanied by two Georgetown policemen to be taken back to authorities in Frederick County. Also on the train was Richard Thomas, the husband of Regina Thomas, who had assisted in the capture of Carroll. And unbeknownst to Carroll and the two policemen, before the train left Washington, Thomas had telegraphed others in Point of Rocks to meet the train on its way to Frederick. Trains from Washington to Frederick stopped in Point of Rocks to pick up passengers and discharge passengers and freight. You can see in the map, the train line from Washington to Point of Rocks at the bottom of the map. At the time, this was called the Metropolitan Branch of the Baltimore and Ohio Railroad. When Carroll's train approached Point of Rocks late in the afternoon, a crowd estimated to number as many as 300 people met the train. Seeing the crowd, the train's engineer stopped the train before getting all the way to the station. Frederick's mayor, Louis Moberly, had earlier in the afternoon received an anonymous telegram telling him he should be at the Point of Rocks Station to meet the Washington train. Slide please. Later, Moberly said he was standing on the station platform, and this is the station, "And when the train came around the bend and stopped, quote, 'The crowd that had been standing around the depot immediately made a great rush in that direction.'" Men on horseback surrounded the train and a dozen or more men, quote, "almost falling over each other's shoulders," according to the train conductor, rushed into the car where Carroll and the police officers were now trapped. Slide. The crowd had become a mob, and one of the policemen later recalled, "The mob fairly howled." Although the two Georgetown policemen tried to prevent Carroll from being taken by the mob, they were quickly overpowered. Carroll was carried off the train, a noose was placed around his neck, and he was dragged across the field to a tree. Slide please. The area in the red circle on this map is where I think the lynching occurred. One man kicked Carroll in the head as he lay on his back. The rope was wrapped around a limb of the tree and Carroll was lifted off the ground. Slide. It took 10 minutes, 10 minutes for James Carroll to die, because according to one report, the rope was so poorly knotted. After the hanging, pieces of Carroll's coat and shirt were cut off by those, quote, "wishing to carry away mementos." Worse still, someone cut off one of Carroll's fingers as a souvenir. Carroll's body continued to hang from the tree all that night. The next morning, many people visited the site of the lynching to look at the body. The county coroner finally, finally arrived around 4 o'clock that afternoon and took Carroll's body to a livery stable in Frederick, and I have yet to find an explanation in the press as to why that's where he was taken. In Maryland, until 1939, suspicious deaths were investigated by something called a coroner's jury, made up of 12 citizens of the county appointed by the state's attorney. Their job was to examine the body, hear testimony, question witnesses, and deliver a verdict as to the cause of the death. Slide please. The coroner's jury for James Carroll's death met on the Monday following the lynching. Reporters for several newspapers had written that the men who lynched Carroll did not wear masks and were well-known farmers and residents of the Point of Rocks area. One newspaper reported that, quote, "There would be a difficulty in obtaining a jury as almost every man in the neighborhood had lent a hand in the lynching." The Baltimore Sun predicted that, quote, "Inasmuch as the names of quite a number of those who participated in the lynchings are known and others can be easily obtained, it is believed that the state's attorney and jurors will consider it incumbent upon them to make the investigation as searching as possible." The coroner's jury did no such thing. The state's attorney complained that it was almost impossible to find anyone who knew anything about the lynching, and after the jury interviewed only a few witnesses, they returned a verdict that Carroll had been killed by, quote, "A body of men unknown." Carroll was buried in the county's Alms House Cemetery on the outskirts of Frederick, a Potter's Field that was the final resting place for those who died forgotten, without family, unclaimed, and discarded. The Alms House is long gone, but the cemetery remains still on county property. Slide please. The dead are remembered by one lone marker that reads "Memory Potter Field." Slide please. The second lynching in Frederick County occurred in 1887 in Frederick. On the evening of November 18th, 1887, Mary Jaikle, a well-known and prominent white resident of Frederick, was walking down South Market Street in Frederick toward her home when she was attacked and knocked to the ground. She struggled with her assailant, and when others arrived on the scene, the attacker fled. Jaikle said her attacker was a young black man unknown to her. Within a day, several African-American men were detained by the police, including John Bigas. John Bigas was 19-years-old and was from the Woodville area of eastern Frederick County near Mount Airy. His parents were Henry and Emma Bigas. He had only lived in Frederick a short time, and he himself had been the victim of an assault soon after he moved to town. Bigas was suspected in part because someone claimed to have seen him near the site of the attack, and also because he wore brass rings, and Jaikle thought her attacker had used brass knuckles in the assault. Bigas said he was at a Salvation Army event that evening, which was confirmed by several of his friends, and although eyewitnesses to the attack were unable to positively identify Bigas, he became the primary suspect and was arrested and placed in the city jail. Slide please. In a newspaper article about the arrest, however, the Baltimore Sun reported, quote, "It is now generally, not generally believed, however, that the right person has yet been apprehended." Two days after the incident, Bigas was taken before a Frederick magistrate. Bigas proclaimed his innocence and witnesses were called, but no one, no one was able to identify Bigas as the culprit. Apparently, the magistrate had been reluctant to ask Mary Jaikle herself to try and identify her assailant because she was recovering from her injuries. But since no one else could identify Bigas, the magistrate made arrangements to take him to Jaikle's house so that she could see him. Although other men had also been suspected of the attack and detained, Bigas was the only suspect shown to Jaikle. She claimed Bigas was the person who had attacked her, and although Bigas again said he was innocent, he was taken to the city jail on South Street to await the grand jury's decision as to whether he should stand trial. An angry crowd had gathered on South Market Street in front of Jaikle's home when she was identifying Bigas, and tensions remained high throughout the day. Frederick County State's Attorney Frank Norwood later testified that the threatening appearance of the crowd made him uneasy. That evening, there was an attempt to lynch Bigas. A mob of men and boys gathered at the jail around 11:00 PM and put out all the streetlights near the jail. Before they could do anything else, however, someone said the police were coming and the mob dispersed. Throughout the next day, Norwood, the state's attorney, noticed what he called, quote, "suspicious circumstances" in the streets of Frederick, and he warned the sheriff about the possible danger to Bigas and reminded him that he, the sheriff, had the power to call for extra men to guard the jail. The Frederick News also published an editorial that day urging, quote, "Proper police vigilance." Slide please. Later that night, according to one news report, a number of small boys hanged a dummy on the telegraph pole in front of the jail. Now let that sink in for just a moment. A group of small boys hanged a dummy on the telegraph pole in front of the jail in imitation of a lynching. Slide please. By midnight, a large crowd of men had gathered at the jail. The sheriff had not called for reinforcements and had only two jail employees with him, along with a civilian whom the sheriff had asked to help protect the jail. Also present, unfortunately, was the sheriff's wife and six children. The Frederick Jail was still relatively new, having been built in 1876. The jail part of the structure was actually attached to and positioned behind a big house, which served as the home of the sheriff and his family. In the photograph on the right, you can see the home, and in the plan to the left, you can see the county jail is located behind the house. The house is still standing and is now the Frederick Rescue Mission. As the mob in front of the jail became increasingly hostile, the sheriff later said his family was, quote, "Nearly crazed with fright, my wife becoming very sick." Members of the mob began breaking into the jail. One newspaper claimed that the United Fire Company on South Market Street had let the mob borrow axes and other implements to break into the jail. With so few defenders of the jail, it only took about 15 minutes for the attackers to take Bigas out of his cell and out to the street. Slide please. The crowd took Bigas to Jefferson Pike to a field nearly opposite to where McCurdy Field is now. This map shows the location of the jail on South Street circled on the upper right, and the circle on the bottom left on Jefferson Pike is the approximate location of the lynching. The site was selected presumably because someone knew it had been the childhood home of Mary Jaikle. As a rope was placed around his neck, Bigas tried to escape. He was restrained and Bigas was asked to confess. Bigas again claimed he was innocent and they had the wrong man. He was then lynched and three pistol shots were also fired into his body. Bigas's body remained hanging all night, and the press reported that, quote, "Hundreds of men, women, and children visited the scene of the lynching and the jail." When Bigas was in jail, a young woman named Ida Barnes was one of his visitors. After the lynching, a letter was found in Bigas's clothing addressed to Barnes. It was a very personal letter in which Bigas professed his love to Barnes, and for some reason, the Frederick News actually published the contents of the letter with obviously no thought for the feelings of Barnes and others. Slide please. As with the other two lynchings in Frederick County, a coroner's jury was convened, and unsurprisingly, the verdict of the jury found no one, no one responsible for Bigas's murder. There was much anger, much anger in Frederick over the death of Bigas, and much of the blame was directed at the sheriff for not taking adequate precautions when it was clear that a lynching was threatened. African-American leaders in Frederick issued a resolution condemning the lynching and called on the Frederick County justice system to identify and charge those involved in the murder of Bigas. Slide please. Rumors floated around town that a black mob was going to storm Frederick and seek revenge for the lynching. Eventually, the rumor was proven to be a false accusation, but not before the sheriff gathered 200 armed men, including members of a local militia, to protect the town. One newspaper pointed out the irony of the sheriff's swift reaction to an unconfirmed rumor of African-Americans attacking his jail, compared to his complete lack of preparation when there had been much more reliable intelligence that a white mob was going to storm the jail to lynch John Bigas. One of Frederick's newspapers, The Examiner, concluded that, quote, "If the jail officials had been half as solicitous last week over the safety of their prisoners as they were Monday night over their own, our laws would not have been set at defiance by a mob." Slide please. Another group that protested the lynching was one of the first civil rights groups formed in the United States, the United Mutual Brotherhood of Liberty that had been created in Baltimore in 1885. The Brotherhood's annual meeting in 1887 happened to convene only a few days after the lynching of Bigas. One of the actions taken was a resolution denouncing the lynching as, quote, "A crime against the state, society, the colored race, and humanity," and accusing the sheriff and other public officers as guilty of gross criminal neglect. They also offered a reward of $500 for the arrest and conviction of anyone implicated in the lynching. No one, of course, was implicated or held responsible for the murder of John Bigas, just as no one was ever held responsible for the murders of James Carroll and James Bowens. Slide please. Bigas's body was turned over to his father, Henry Bigas, who took his son home to Woodville and buried him in the Woodville Methodist Church Cemetery. Later, the tree on which Bigas was murdered was struck by lightning and shattered. Slide please. The third and last lynching in Frederick County was committed in November of 1895. James Bowens was a young black resident of Frederick who had worked as a laborer in town. He also played on one of Frederick's African-American amateur baseball teams. He was 24-years-old and the son of Simon and Minnie Bowens, who also lived in Frederick. In November of 1895, Bowens was accused by a young white woman, Lily Long, of having attacked her on a farm on the outskirts of town. Bowens and Frederick were soon accosted by two white men with pistols who said they were making a citizen's arrest. Bowens claimed he was innocent, but the men took him to the Frederick Mayor's Office where he was arrested and taken to the Frederick Jail. Excuse me. Slide please. As false rumors spread that Long had died from her injuries, and she did not die, estimates of 300 to 400 people gathered in front of the jail late on the night of November 16th, 1895. At 12:30 AM, men stormed the jail, overwhelmed the few defenders in the building, and took Bowens from his cell. One person missing from the jail that night was the sheriff, who despite the clear warnings of a possible lynching, chose to remain on his farm in Woodsboro that evening. A newspaper later reported that Lily Long, the woman who had been allegedly assaulted by Bowens, was the sheriff's niece. As Bowens was being taken out of the jail by the mob, a noose was placed around his neck and he was marched to a field off Jefferson Pike near where John Bigas was lynched in 1887. Slide please. When they had selected a tree for the lynching, the leaders of the mob asked Bowens to confess, but he refused, saying he was not guilty. As Bowens was being pulled up by a rope, someone in the crowd fired a shot at Bowens that grazed his temple. After the lynching, the body was left hanging overnight. The next morning, according to newspaper reports, hundreds of men, women, and children, again as before, came to look at Bowens' body and to see the jail from where he had been taken, just as they had after the lynching of John Bigas in 1887. Slide please. One newspaper reported that, quote, "Several Kodak fiends were on hand at the scene of the lynching Sunday and took pictures of the spot and of..." and took pictures of the spot and of the Negro." After the body was cut down, the rope used to hang Bowens was, quote, "eagerly sought after and divided among the number of the crowd in small pieces." Bowens's body was taken to the jail and placed in a coffin, and a coroner's jury was summoned to examine the body. The coffin was placed so that visitors to the jail could see it and see the body, and the jail warden was reported to be busy all day, showing visitors about and asking questions. Having examined the body, the coroner's jury met the following day. Despite the fact that the newspapers reported that few, few of the three hundred to four hundred men in the lynching mob wore masks, the jury determined that Bowens met his death, quote, "at the hands of parties unknown to this jury." On the Sunday following the lynching, many ministers in Frederick, including the ministers of Frederick's African-American churches, denounced the lynchings from their pulpits. One minister said, quote, "A mob is citizenship and anarchy. Let no young man here think he did justice or womanhood a service in the lynching of that black." He added that because of the lynching, quote, "The anger or scorn of sixty millions of people in this country was today directed at the fair fame of this city." Slide, please. Many African-Americans and others in Frederick were outraged by the lynching, and as after the lynching of John Bigus, rumors circulated that a group of young African-American men were going to try and lynch a white man being held in the Frederick jail, who had been charged with assaulting two young girls. Again, in contrast to the incredibly lax security at the jail on the night Bowens was lynched, when the sheriff heard the rumor that African-Americans might attack the jail, he summoned a large posse to protect the jail and posted a heavy guard to patrol the jail yard and vicinity of the jail. No attack on the jail was ever attempted, nor was it ever determined that one had even been contemplated. Slide, please. Bowens's body was taken to his parents' home, where many people came by to console the parents. The funeral took place at the home, and Bowens was buried in the Laboring Sun Cemetery on East Fifth Street in Frederick. A newspaper reported that a large crowd attended. A little over a week after the lynching, someone chopped down the tree on Jefferson Pike from which Bowens had been hanged. No one knew who cut it down, nor the reason why. After the lynching of James Bowens in eighteen ninety-five, there were no other documented lynchings in Frederick County, but there were threats and fears of lynching for years afterwards. The threat of racial terror as a means of control by white supremacists was a constant in the lives of African-Americans in Frederick County for many years. Slide, please. Here's a headline from Frederick newspaper in nineteen eleven, for example. Slide, please. This one is from nineteen thirteen. Slide. Nineteen sixteen. Slide. From nineteen twenty, and so on, and so on. Slide. James Carroll. John Bigus. James Bowens. Slide. Black lives matter, and black lives in the past also matter. We cannot afford to forget and ignore this history. We cannot afford to forget and ignore these men who were murdered. So if you would please, if you were so inclined, please join me as I repeat these names one more time. Slide. James Carroll.
James Carroll.
John Bigus.
John Bigus.
James Bowens.
James Bowens.
Thank you. If you're interested in a more detailed report on the history of lynching in Frederick County, there is a QR code on the program for today, and that links to the longer footnoted report. Now, please go and tell this story to everyone you know in Frederick County. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Let's give him another round of applause. As Dean said, there were three murders that occurred in Frederick County over a span of sixteen years, and their murderers were never brought to justice. And so again, we must remember: James Carroll, Point of Rocks, eighteen seventy-nine; John Bigus, Frederick, eighteen eighty-seven; and James Bowen, Frederick, eighteen ninety-five. Next, I'm going to read the bio of Dr. Teri Ann Scott. Dr. Teri Ann Scott is the Director of the Institute of Common Power of Washington, D.C. She received her bachelor's degree in history from Arizona State University; her master's degree in history from Southern Methodist University, and her doctorate in history from the University of Chicago. Prior to joining the Institute of Common Power, Dr. Scott received an associate professor and chair of the Department of History at Hood College. She is the author of "Lynching and Leisure: Race and the Transformation of Mob Violence in Texas." She is unable to join us today, as she has been appointed to the Editor's Bureau of the Journals of American History, the primary journal published by the Organization of American Historians, and as such, one of the few women of color to ever receive such an appointment. I present to you Dr. Ann Scott.
James Carroll, Point of Rocks, eighteen seventy-nine; John Bigus, Frederick, eighteen eighty-seven; James Bowens, Frederick, eighteen eighty-five. Before any other words I utter here, I want to acknowledge three of the men we are discussing today: James Carroll, John Bigus, James Bowens, three black men who were lynched in Frederick County, Maryland. I am honored to be here and speak their names, to participate in an event born from people working across difference, working to establish accountability, to, in the words of the Equal Justice Initiative, memorialize documented victims of racial violence and foster meaningful dialogue about race and justice. I am Dr. Teri Ann Scott, a scholar of lynching and resident of Frederick, Maryland. I left my tenure position as an associate professor of history and chair of the Department of History at Hood College in June twenty-twenty-two, to become the director of the Institute for Common Power. We create programming and learning experiences that work to promote and safeguard truth in history. I also currently teach part-time at the University of Maryland. I've studied lynching for over twenty years. In twenty-twenty-two, my book, "Lynching and Leisure: Race and the Transformation of Mob Violence," was released. I am also honored to be a member of the Board for the Lynching Memorial Project. I commend everyone who is present today for your commitment to promoting truth, to countering those who are trying to silence truth, to supporting those who stand for truth, and for partnering with organizations and leaders who are committed to combating efforts to erase truth from existence. Why do I reference and repeat the word "truth" here today? Because as I stand here, there is an assault on the truth in this country, in attempt to codify the denial of systemic racism and erase the histories of African-Americans and other marginalized groups, to legislate against our ability to discuss lynching and its legacies, our ability to promote and teach the vast contributions of African-Americans and others to the very existence of this nation. In Florida, politicians have banned the implementation of AP African-American studies in secondary schools. They have banned books, political leaders, and their bans of sycophants in that state, in Texas, in Tennessee, Ohio, and elsewhere, have promoted an anti-woke agenda that fosters disdain for teaching the histories of marginalized people, or for promoting programs of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Just last week, the University of Texas in Austin fired its entire staff working in diversity, equity, and inclusion. Educators in recent months have been fired for teaching about racial and social justice. These policies and ideologies have stoked hatred among those who believe that the history we are acknowledging today, the history of lynching and the legacies it has produced, should be hidden, ignored. They seek to keep us veiled in ignorance, to force us to never learn from the lessons of the past and carry them into a better future. We have an opportunity here in Maryland to lead in a different way. We've already undertaken this assignment. That's what brings us together today. We believe in truth. We believe in reconciliation. We understand the implications and legacies of racial violence. We have existed in Maryland as pioneers in how to codify and promote truth. This is a community where we acknowledge and reconcile with the past in an effort to engender healing and unity, but there is still more to be done. We must stand here today united on our path forward. Let's examine for a moment the history of lynching and how it ties to our modern world. Ida B. Wells Barnett, the intrepid journalist and anti-lynching activist who risked her livelihood and life to expose the wicked practices and lynching, of lynching that were terrorizing communities across the country, insisted, quote, "Our country's national crime is lynching. It is not the creature of an hour, the sudden outburst of uncontrolled fury, or the unspeakable brutality of an insane mob. It represents cool, calculating deliberation of intelligent people." Lynching victims in the first decades following the Civil War were typically white. The victims' bodies were frequently found intact, hanging from trees in the hours or days following their deaths, and the parties that lynched them, if ever seen, were often masked for fear of arrest, culpability. By stark contrast, following the Civil War and very specifically Reconstruction, the lynching of black people was done with a visibility, an impunity, and frequently a fanfare that would come to define the new culture of lynching in America. We tend to think about what constitutes crime in conventional ways: arson, murder, et cetera. But the definition of crime changes when race and a racial hierarchy are involved. During this post-Bellamera, in the absence of a master-slave dyad when white people sought to reinforce white supremacy, a crime committed by a black person was perceived as particularly egregious misconduct that often signaled a broad call to action. Such incidents encouraged a suspension of due process in an effort to maintain white supremacy. The courts, these actions argued, were not needed. Once a strictly punitive and largely clandestine form of extralegal punishment, lynching evolved, in that era, into a wholly racialized, publicly viewed, well-attended, frequently commercialized exhibition of mob violence, where people procured corporal souvenirs, photographs, postcards to commemorate the events. The lynching victim was now typically black, and a mob's fear of judicial retribution for its murderous efforts nearly disappeared. In the process, the concept of crime shifted. The list of alleged offenses that created the assemblage of a mob predictably included murder and assault, as well as dubious allegations such as flippantly responding to a white man, organizing migration out of a state, being too prosperous for a black person, or even voting. This gamut of transgressions wavering between modern interpretations of criminal transgressions and the fiercely ridiculous exposes the mutability of crime. The idea of what constituted a crime had clearly become something subject to unbelievably racist and horrific interpretations. This new lynching narrative emerging in the late nineteenth century punished the crime of black existence, the crime of stepping outside of one's place. Black lives, it's said, did not matter. The legacies of lynching linger. They evade the consciousness of some law enforcement and regular citizens in Maryland and beyond. The patrolling of black people's place continues to serve as a superlative entity in an algorithm for what renders a crime a crime. Expressions of freedom, sovereignty, and advancement by black people continue to function as crime in the same manner as violent misconduct. What appears as seemingly benign activities still frequently gain potency when the perceived aggressor is black and the racial hierarchy is ostensibly threatened. Over the last few years, we have witnessed how freedom expressions of black people are surveilled and criminalized. Citizens who believe they are patrolling their local environments are in fact patrolling racial boundaries. People have in recent years and months called the police on black people who are, for instance, attempting to access the parking garage or gym in the building where they reside, hosting a lemonade stand, picking up trash in their front yard, or simply jogging. Crime, then, is still something defined by historically specific phenomena, by the nuances of an everyday existence, by social interactions about ideas of race and identity, by sheer racism. At times, the outcome is still death. We have felt the pain of that here in Maryland. We can each cite examples related to this. These are legacies of slavery, legacies of Jim Crow, legacies of lynching. Lynching is American history of Viers Bryan Stevenson, the incomparable soldier for justice and founder of the Equal Justice Initiative. And for us to recover from that violence and terror, terror, he continues, we all have to know that history, and we all have to talk about it. That, he reminds us, will compel us to think differently about what we need to do to confront the past, to address the past, and to make a better future. Despite this horrific reality, we are not the society we once were. This is evidenced, for instance, by this meeting today, by the collective work of so many diverse people to create healing across difference, to bring accountability. Progress is real, palatable. And so while we still have work to do, we can stand here today and acknowledge and be comforted by the strides we have made in Maryland toward a more just and inclusive democracy. There is power in truth and persistence. We can change people's hearts and minds, and gatherings like this today begin to do that eminently important heartfelt work. If we can't change the hearts and minds of some people, we can legislate against their ability to harm anyone. Let us continue to work together and lead with love. I am in the company of truth-tellers, disruptors, warriors in the battle for justice here. While politicians and laypersons in cities and states across the country are running away from the truth, doing all they can to hide the truth, creating false narratives, you all are embracing truth, illuminating it. That is no small feat, and it deserves recognition, respect, applause. Bravo. It makes me proud to live in this state. The Maryland Lynching Truth and Reconciliation Commission is creating change. You are the guardians of truth. You are disruptors. You are impacted. You are moved to action. I began today by speaking the names of the victims of racial lynching in Frederick: James Carroll, John Bigus, James Bowens. Now it is time we speak the names of their lynchers, of the people who murdered them. They must be posthumously held accountable to help facilitate the healing process so desperately needed by descendants of the victims, by all of us as inheritors of this history. We must now do more to acknowledge and disrupt the legacies of lynching. Those of you in a position to bring about accountability, change, must do more to acknowledge and disrupt the legacies of lynching. The late, great Congressman John Lewis said, "When you see something that is not right, not fair, not just, you have a moral obligation to continue to speak up, to speak out." We are here today to speak up and speak out against the horrors and lingering effects of lynching in Maryland and across the nation. How will you uphold, embody the veracity of the words spoken by Congressman Lewis? How do we further safeguard truth and facilitate reconciliation? The path is laid before us. Now it is time to walk swiftly toward a world of possibility, a world of accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. And if you don't know, now you know.
Our next section concentrates on the victims, or the descendants of the victims. And introducing that section will be Gayon Sampson. Mr. Sampson currently serves as chief of staff of the mayor, for the mayor.
You can't hear me?
No. So before we get to testimony, we do want to give an overview of the research that was done by the commission.
Okay.
And then we'll promptly move to you all. So very quickly, if I may.
You may.
Okay, thank you. I would like to, thank you for your flexibility and your grace.
No problem.
I'd like to acknowledge the chair of the Research Committee of the MLTRC, David Armenti, who will just provide the Research Committee's findings pertaining to the cases of Frederick County, and then we will promptly move to what is the most important part of this, the testimony of the descendant. the testimony of the descendants.
Thank you so much. And I echo that sentiment and will try to keep my remarks as brief as possible. But again, my name is David Armenti. I'm the Chair of the Research Committee, and in my day job, I'm the Vice President of Education and Engagement at the Maryland Center for History and Culture, formerly Maryland Historical Society. I appreciate you all being here with us today. As a commission and as a community, we intend to commemorate the lives of James Carroll, John Biggess, and James Bowens, while supporting all efforts to document the crimes against them. Thanks to the many researchers who have laid the essential groundwork to allow additional documentation and visibility in our ongoing work. And you'll also forgive me if I'm repeating some elements of Dr. Heron's research, as it is so foundational, but I also want to establish some of the threads that we as a commission, a committee, and as a public in general are going to continue to investigate as we continue our work. Since the establishment of the State Commission in 2019, we've worked with an array of partners, including the Maryland State Archives, the Maryland Lynching Memorial Project, its local affiliates, George Mason University. Heritage Associates is also a local historical research and genealogy firm that has joined our team with the commission. I, of course, would like to acknowledge and credit the work of those who have been doing this for years, including Dr. Jean Heron, the African-American Resources Cultural and Heritage of Frederick, Mr. Will Schwartz, Dr. Nicholas Creary, and many others. The commission will build on that earlier work of the Archives, African-American Resources Cultural and Heritage of Frederick, and the Maryland Lynching Memorial Project, and compiling and supporting digital access to newspaper articles, vital records, and secondary research accounts. The commission seeks to further corroborate existing and future cases based on those newspaper accounts, government records, family papers, as well as oral history interviews. So as we continue that work and as we continue to incorporate those sources and that information, that's going to be compiled and made more accessible, particularly on a digital level, through our website that is hosted by the Maryland State Archives, as well as other means. To reflect, again, Dr. Heron's point, it's not about just telling truth here today, but the ability to continue to share and speak truth within the many rooms that many of us inhabit. Online genealogical collections and platforms have also been invaluable in gaining further knowledge about the victims' families and backgrounds and providing leads about possible living descendants. Through these and other channels, additional collateral descendants of James Bowen, James Carroll, and John Biggess, as well as direct descendants, have been contacted and consulted on details relating to that family history. Others have reached out to the commission in response to media coverage or other community outreach, some of those individuals having chosen to participate with us today. And again, I thank you, and we'll move as quickly as we can to that essential portion of our program. Efforts are ongoing to establish more knowledge about the victims' lives and families. And again, speaking of the end date of the commission, our work does not end when the commission ends. But we want to continue to know and learn the humanity, who their parents were, who their family members were, what communities they inhabited or moved from, had they been enslaved or faced other challenges derived from white supremacy. Where did they worship, work, and socialize? What were their lives like after these horrific crimes took place? Did they or their families know each other? How do they grieve or grapple with that trauma in the moment when these incidents occurred? These are not questions that can all be readily answered many generations later, but that's part of our goal, is to establish that context and move toward healing in those ways. As a committee, we continue to track themes and trends, both within the specific jurisdictions as well as across the whole state of Maryland. Frederick County just quickly provides some interesting aspects to explore, especially given the relatively short time between the three racial terror lynchings. That was mentioned earlier. We're talking about a 16- to 17-year period in which these three racial terror lynchings took place. So clearly, racial terror was a present and impactful reality for the Black population in Frederick County. In fact, multiple generations would have at least been aware, if not had direct firsthand experiences related to these incidents. I would add as well that there were kind of some supplementary incidents that took place, aside from the three racial terror murders that we are acknowledging here today. There was also an 1880 lynching of an individual named Paige Wallace, which, while it took place in Virginia, that individual was captured and taken from Point of Rocks, Maryland, which we've heard about today. That happened in 1880. There was also a murder of a Black community member by a white police officer in 1887, almost immediately prior to Biggess's murder, that also heightened tensions within the community. That white police officer was acquitted of that alleged crime in that case. Additionally, and this news just came to us very, very recently from one of our colleagues and supporting staffs at the Maryland State Archives, that there was actually a near lynching in 1907 in Frederick County as well. So simply, again, thinking about this period of time, several decades in which not only these three murders occurred that we're talking about today, but an overall sense of racial fear and terror associated with the overall community context there. We also recognize, as Dr. Heron mentioned, that this is a transitional era from the Reconstruction period that we recognize following the Civil War. Fifteen of the 38 murders that occurred in Maryland happened during this time period, 1879 to 1895. That aligns pretty closely with a trend that we see nationally in terms of the post-Reconstruction period, in which white supremacy and white community members are attempting to reassert themselves, particularly in other communities around the country. So in Frederick County, there would have been a continual awareness of such violence, especially and its message of white supremacy to that approximately 15% of the population within the county. It's also worth noting that the white community would have carried this collective memory of events, and certain individuals connected to multiple cases we can highlight within the research. I believe it was mentioned earlier, it was for sure mentioned earlier, that one of the alleged victims that led to the lynching of James Bowen was the niece of the sheriff. We also know that Akili Yekel, was the Frederick City Mayor in 1895 when James Bowen was lynched, happened to be the son of the purported victim of John Biggess. So these are not disconnected details that do not relate to each other. When you start to put that together and recognize these individual connections, these community connections, again, we can see how they inform and impact each other, and certainly, again, establish that context of racial terror within the community. Geographically, we also recognize the relative intensity in the southern portion of the county and near Virginia and the Potomac River. Again, not to belabor some of the points that we already heard earlier, but the establishment and involvement of the Mutual Brotherhood of Liberty out of Baltimore should not be downplayed or dismissed as we talk about this. We're talking about the burgeoning early civil rights movement, if you will. That's an organization that preceded the NAACP nationally or its local chapters that would become impactful here in the 20th century. So understanding that while these events were horrific and caused trauma of all magnitude, in some sense, they were leading to this advocacy. And additionally, that organization came to the legal defense of a victim in Baltimore County, who's also received a public hearing, and that was a teenager named Howard Cooper, who was also lynched in the 1880s. I do want to mention as well the absence of Black community perspective in newspaper reporting, which Dr. Heron alluded to. So though the Baltimore Afro-American newspaper would have been established in the 1890s, that's a resource that we've often leaned on to provide the proper context, the humanity, that additional details that we need outside of what we're seeing from the white press, countering that presumed guilt, the inflammatory language, even the celebration that was expressed by some of those in the white community and in the white press. Unfortunately, for this period of time, we don't have as much of that Black newspaper and media presence to inform and provide that context for us. However, that's something that we are going to continue to pursue as a commission, because the Baltimore Afro-American newspaper was not the only or the first publication by African-Americans in Maryland, nor around the country. So that's another thread that we'll certainly continue to pursue, to provide more context and humanity and detail to all of these individuals. I'll finish by saying that we continue to work with state, county, and local district agencies to locate relevant record collections. You can imagine that especially in 2020, 2021, this was rather difficult. Things have opened up. The spirit of collaboration is revived and access to material, so we certainly want to leverage all of those relationships around the state, and again, push for greater public accessibility through digitization of those records to make sure that they're available, not just for us, not just for seasoned researchers, but anybody to find and learn about their community. Additionally, the commission seeks to connect with direct and collateral descendants of the victims, as well as contemporary community members, and we encourage you to continue that conversation and this pursuit with us by contacting us at mltrc@marilyn.gov. But again, I want to thank everyone here for their time on this Saturday spending with us, the descendants, and looking very much forward to hearing that perspective, as well as our many local colleagues that have made this possible for us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Armenti. So as we now transition to testimony, I would just like to reiterate our guidelines for testimony. So this will certainly start with the descendants and then transition to community testimony. And as we mentioned, towards the end of our hearing, there will be time and space for public comment. So again, to reiterate our policy, please provide your name and organizational affiliation, if any, and please limit your comments or questions to no more than three sentences. Questions and comments must be limited to the topic of discussion for today's hearing. If your comment or question is off-topic, it will not be included in the hearing. Comments and questions should be presented with decorum and the respect appropriate for conducting this public hearing. Any comments or questions containing obscene language or language inciting imminent violence will not be addressed. Finally, please note that members of the media may be present during today's hearing, and as such, public comments and questions may be broadcast or printed by news outlets. So again, I thank you all for your understanding and for your acceptance of these guidelines. And without further ado, let's now transition to our testimony.
Thank you. I want to express our appreciation for the work done by the research division and encourage the continuation of that work, as there's a lot more that needs to be revealed. At this time, we will move to the most significant aspect of this proceeding, and that is the testimony of the descendants. I do want to reemphasize something that was just said, and that is that there is a collective memory. And that collective memory is something that we should be referencing continuously as we go through these hearings. The next presenter was Gayon Sampson, and I think I got it right. Sometimes people say Gayon. Gayon Sampson. Gayon currently serves as Chief of Staff through the Mayor of the City of Frederick, being appointed to this position in July 2022. Prior to joining the City of Frederick, Gayon worked in the Office of Government and Community Affairs at Johns Hopkins University and Medicine. I guess he could straighten that off, but that's wrong. Prior to joining Johns Hopkins, he worked at the Greater Baltimore Committee. In addition, he has experience working both on Capitol Hill and for the Maryland General Assembly. He is an eighth-generation native of Frederick County. Gayon is very active in the community. He earned his bachelor's degree in political science from Towson University and his master's degree in public administration from the University of Maryland at the College Park School of Public Policy. Without further ado, I present to you Gayon.
I was at Johns Hopkins University in Medicine, so I don't know what happened. I'm here now in the City of Frederick. But we are here to talk about the most important part of today, which is descendants' testimony. And I wanted to say thank you all for having me be a part of this, but also thank you for doing this. Descendant testimony from families of lynching victims holds profound importance in the broader context of historical memory and justice. These testimonies serve as a crucial narrative that helps to fill the gaps left by the historical records, which often omit or distort the experiences of reality of those who suffered under such brutal acts of racial violence. Through the voices of descendants, we gain a more nuanced and personal understanding to the impact of lynchings had on individuals and communities affected that goes across generations. Moreover, descendants' testimony plays a vital role in the pursuit of justice and reconciliation. It humanizes the statistical and often impersonal accounts of these atrocities, bringing to light the enduring pain and trauma that families carry. This personal aspect can drive empathetic responses and support from the wider public and policymakers, forcing a stronger collective commitment to address and rectify the legacies of such injustices. Today, we are going to hear from three descendants: Shonta Teflar from the Biggess family, Teflar, sorry, from the Biggess family, Devonte Freeland from the Bowens family, and Eric Ashby Bay from the Bowens family. I think we're going to start with Shonta. Is it right here or right there?
This has been a very emotional program, and I want to say, I started to write something for today, and then something in my heart told me, no, wait, feel the atmosphere of today and speak from the heart, speak from the pain that has affected our family. Our cousin Lacy, who was supposed to speak today, couldn't be here, so I'm speaking for her. This is also a descendant here, Robyn Dorsey. I just want to say that I think the main thing that we feel, as we've had to acknowledge this pain, acknowledge this wrongful death, is that we would like some type of acknowledgement, recognition from those individuals. Not, you know, we can't say from them, because, you know, this happened a long time ago, it's long gone, but the same way we're here, there's descendants of those families who knows these stories. There's descendants of these families who were present. And as I said, and as, you know, Dr. Heron said in one thing, someone took a finger. There's trinkets that they have, because they felt proud of what they did. They took someone's child. They took someone's brother, uncle, cousin, without a thought, just because of the color of their skin. We had no value. They took an innocent man because someone had to die because someone felt offended. It's a travesty. And we're just asking that the Sheriff's Department, what have they done in these statements, even acknowledging their role in this to the community? Now, where is an apology? That's what we want. An apology, an acknowledgement from the figures that took place in this. An apology, an acknowledgement from the figures that took place in this. And as I said, there were so many other lynchings, disregard of life that has happened in this county, not only during this time, not only the three that have been documented. There's hundreds that have not. The terror committed against our community in this county did not just happen during Jim Crow. It continued, and it still continues to this day. I'm only 48 years old, and I grew up with the terror in this county. There was places I grew up to this day that I knew I couldn't go to in the seventies and the eighties, when my husband would say, let's go here. I said, oh, no, 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 no. We don't go there. And I would tell him, you know what? My husband's of Indian descent, so I would say, you go check it out for me and let me know how it feels now, then we can go. So this is how it still affects us to this day. And I, and I will say this as well, that this is not the only family member that we've had to deal with, with this type of terror. John Biggs had another cousin who was not documented, which is my grandfather, Charles Cosley. He went fishing with a group of his family, his friends, his partners, a place where they went to every weekend, something that they did on the regular. They said my grandfather cat called a white boy. This is the story passed down in my family. White men beat him. Were unclear as if he was lynched or hung, but we do know that his neck was broke. Tell me how that happened. And they documented it and said he was drowned. The only reason why we know this is because the men that were present, once my father became an adult, sat him down and told him the story of what had occurred that day. But we don't all get that because the older generation didn't always tell us these stories or the lynching of John Biggs, because they were trying to protect us. They were trying to protect us. And they were also trying to guard the hurt that they had to go through coming from that error. Why continue the pain? And we just ask, not for resolution, because there'll never be resolution, but there can always be communication, understanding, empathy. But at the end of the day, we just ask for acknowledgement from those families, from the people who stood there, watched, laughed, took trinkets, but mostly from the government, from the Sheriff's Department, from understanding even that family is still in politics today. But have you made a public statement to say, I'm sorry that we acknowledge what our place, our role in this? No. And that's what we came here today to ask for.
Hi, my name is Robyn Dorsey Cosley. I'm going to keep it simple. I'm 62 years old, and it really, I have to say honestly, growing up my whole life here in Frederick County, I never knew until a few years ago, when my Aunt Fanny Biggs passed away, that, and out of the hurt, and Lacy's broken heart, and she Googled her name, and this came up. So I was almost 60 years old before we found out anything about all of this lynching stuff. I would just like to say there was a tear in my eye, but it's gone now. I think it was, at first, Shonta helped me soothe that pain because she said the things that I was feeling. But all of our life, this was hid from us. Every year in our school, we did Black History, and nobody ever brought any of this up. In all the years that we went to school, and I was pretty smart in school, can't say I am now, but I was then. But I would like to say that there are still people, according to the records in power in this county, and there has been no acknowledgement. And I'd like to ask, through all of this, that we're standing here today, somebody takes responsibility. I get it. You weren't here, you weren't here, you weren't here. I wasn't here when it happened, but it happened. So let's not say, why should I have to make this right? I think that somebody needs to make it right. Thank you.
We will now have Devonte Freeland from the Bowens family.
Good morning, everyone. What can I say? My name is Devonte Freeland, and I have had months to prepare for this. I've had months to prepare to speak to you all, to figure out what I felt. And honestly, I just kept putting it off and putting it off. And the more I thought about it, the more I realized that, that what I carried was actually an incredible burden. I'm the only living person in my family who knows this story. Until recently, none of my living relatives even knew we had roots in Maryland. I'm from New Jersey. I grew up in New Jersey. No one in my family knew that we had these roots, these deep roots, roots that go back over 250 years, and that's just what the paper trail can tell us. As an African-American, I knew that my ancestors were enslaved. I went to school, I learned that. I'd even at one point managed to trace my family's history back to 1870. And then in summer 2020, y'all remember that time? It was a moment of racial reckoning, if that's what you want to call it. I set out to learn the stories of my family before 1870, before the Civil War, before emancipation. And thanks to that moment of racial reckoning, thanks to also being locked up in the house and needing something to do with my time, and also truly thanks to the incredible resources that the state of Maryland had put out, the Maryland State Archives had done in terms of investing and preserving and making accessible online the stories of Black Marylanders. Thanks to all those resources, thanks to that moment of reckoning, I learned more than I could have imagined. I got far more than I bargained for. It was, it was really hard. It was really hard. And like I said, I'm the only person in my family who knows this story. I haven't had the courage to tell my family yet. The thing is, it's really hard to, to process. The event that we're talking about happened 129 years ago. I didn't know James Bowens. No one in my family has ever met James Bowens. I had never met anyone in my family who even knew that our roots were right here in Frederick. His story, I don't know what word to use to describe it, so I just, I just won't. You heard the story. But a recurring theme in my head, and it reminds me of the testimony we just heard, is that sometimes folks felt that some of these stories maybe didn't need to be told, maybe didn't need to be passed on, that passing on the story was also, in, in some ways, passing on the tragedy to another generation. And, and I want to respect the decisions of, of the folks who came before me not to pass on those stories. I understand why they did it, and right now I am struggling with that same burden. James Bowens was accused of a crime, a heinous crime, but that was always the case. That was often the case with these lynchings, with these murders. When I was growing up in school, I was told that in this country, when you're accused of a crime, you are afforded your day in court. James Bowens didn't get that. He was denied a trial. He was denied due process, but at the same time, I think it would be naive of me to stand up here and declare confidently that the solution to the wrongs against James Bowens would have been righted if he had only had a trial. Would he really have had his due process? Would he have enjoyed the right of being judged by a jury of his peers? You all heard the reports of the coroner's juries. They said, we couldn't find anybody who was involved, who was around, who participated in the lynching. I, I don't really know what justice looks like for him. I think at, at a bare minimum, justice is, is telling the story. See, in, in summer of 2020, as I was learning more and more, I, I had such mixed feelings. I was proud of what I learned. I was proud to learn of my roots in Maryland. I thought of folks like Frederick Douglass, Harriet Tubman, Thurgood Marshall. That's Maryland. That was the Maryland I thought of. I was proud to learn about James Bowens' father, who was a veteran of the Civil War, Simon Bowens. He was born in Bucy Town about 1842. He was enslaved by the Pierre and the Hayes families that lived in Bucy Town, Frederick, and nearby Comus in Montgomery County. Simon Bowens gained his freedom in November 1864, when Maryland abolished slavery. He was drafted shortly after that and went on to serve in the 41st U.S. Colored Infantry Regiment at the tail end of the Civil War. I can only imagine his mindset. I can only imagine that he was honored to fight for the cause, that he wore the Union colors with pride. I can only imagine. He served his country with honor. He fought to free other Black Americans who were still held in slavery. In fact, I, I just realized this morning, as I was driving over here, that he, Simon Bowens, was in Texas, serving in the Union Army during the first Juneteenth in 1865. He was a veteran. He was a patriot. He was a formerly enslaved man who would, 30 years later, see his son dragged from the Frederick jail and lynched by a mob. I can only imagine. What happened to James Bowens is unforgivable, and there are so many more terrible, unforgivable stories from that time that were never told, that we will never know. Those stories are lost. And as I said before, to some extent, I, I get why no one wanted to tell them. Was it a family story that was just forgotten? Was it a story that was withheld? Were there conscious choices not to pass down this history? Did my ancestors want me to grow up not knowing about what happened? I, I don't know. I can't answer that, but I know now, and I can only process based on that. I was asked before attending this event, what justice could look like, and honestly, truly, I don't know. I don't know. I don't speak for James Bowens. I don't speak for Private Simon Bowens. But I felt that I owed it to them to speak, if only to speak for myself. That mob, the unmasked mob that no one could identify, that mob took James' life, but they didn't take away his name. They didn't take away his father, Simon's service to his country. They couldn't take away the decades and the centuries of labor and toil that built this country, that built this county, that built this city. And they cannot take away the knowledge that I have, even though I am still not sure that I want it. Like I said, I grew up in New Jersey. I came to Frederick for the first time last year in September to visit the Laboring Son Cemetery. One day, maybe, I will gather up the courage to visit the site on the farm where James Bowens and John Biggs and others were hanged. I will, once I get some time to regain my energy, continue my research into the Bowens family, their story of slavery, and their lives after emancipation. And, and that is all I can do. I am truly grateful for the opportunity to come and speak to you all, to return to Frederick. I'm grateful to the commission. I'm grateful to all the resources that the state of Maryland has put forward to telling these stories, to preserving these histories. But what does justice look like? I still don't know. Thank you.
We will now have Eric Ashby Bay.
Good morning. I am a descendant of James Bowens. I didn't grow up in Frederick. I grew up in Baltimore. My mother grew up in Frederick, and our family names are Proctor, Burns, Whalen, Weeden, Laird, many other ones. I visited Point of Rocks. That's where my mother grew up. Grandmother lived there, great-grandmother lived there, visited there often as a child. Right up the street from my, my grandmother's house was our family cemetery, the Point of Rocks Color Cemetery, 1879. Before I found out about James Bowens, the only thing I knew about lynching was my father. And he grew up in Baltimore, born in 1919. And he used to talk about, so this is a personal connection that I had, the only one up until this time, with lynching. He used to talk about before they used to go to school, when he was in elementary school, aunt or his mother, whoever was there at the time, would tell all him and the cousins, you know, mind your teachers, be good in school, and don't talk to any little white girls, you know, because that could have ended up not in a good way. And he also talked about going to school in the morning and seeing somebody hanging from a light pole in Baltimore City. You know, this was in the, the late twenties, the thirties, you know? So like when we talk about these horrific crimes, it's not that far back in, in history, you know? You know, so we got to talk about these things, you know? I commend Germany for how they handled the, the horrific crime of, of, of the Nazis because they talked about it. They, they, they made their children learn about it. And see, when you do that, and people know what actually happened, that's when it'll never happen again. See, but when you hide history, you know, when you try to sugarcoat it by saying slavery was forced relocation, these kind of things, you know? When you say plantation instead of... plantation instead of forced labor camp, you know, for life, you know, this is how the people that wanted to disappear, that's how they make it disappear. You know, they make it just like a, you know, a sideline, you know. So, I'm just, I'm grateful to be here. I just learned about this a year ago, James Bowens being lynched. It didn't surprise me, because I'm 58 years old, give or be 58 years old, living in America all my life, so nothing surprises me. You know, you know, I thought often, like, how should I feel about this? Because, like, the brother before me, which is a cousin probably somehow, I didn't know James Bowens. The first Bowens that I knew was my grandma, great-grandma Bowens, Eleanor Bowens. She was born in 1882, died in 1985. Sweetest woman in the world. Everybody called her Grandma, I mean Aunt Ellie, you know, white folks and black folks called her Aunt Ellie. When we used to come to Point of Rocks, it was amazing to me, because I'm from Baltimore, where nobody talks to each other, you know, you know, we keep your head down, you know. You know, people say good morning, you thinking, what's wrong with them, you know. You know, so coming to Frederick, I'm thinking, where did we just go, go down to Alabama or something? That's what I used to think, growing up, right? So, once again, understanding the history, you know, and I think, I call myself a student of history, you know, nothing surprised me. So, I just, I prepared a testimony. It says, "My testimony about the lynching," and in parentheses, I have "the heinous extrajudicial murder of James Bowens and my family connection to James Bowens." It says, "Gratitude to this esteemed commission for allowing me to speak. I, Eric Ashby Bay, am a living descendant of James Bowens that was murdered by a wicked mob in Frederick, Maryland in 1885. It is a shame that 129 years later, we are just addressing this horrific crime. With the end of the Civil War and the passage of the 13th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, James Bowens was a free man. His rights were supposed to be protected under the U.S. Constitution, the Maryland State Constitution, Frederick County Government, and law enforcement. All of these before-mentioned entities failed to protect James Bowens. Firstly, James Bowens should be publicly declared innocent because of, because he didn't receive a fair trial. Federal, state, and local governments should issue formal apologies to James Bowens and his descendants for their dereliction of duty. Even though this took place 129 years ago, and the people involved in this monstrous crime are deceased, they should all be publicly tried and convicted of this injustice. Lily Long, the alleged victim, Sheriff Daniel P. Zimmerman, the Frederick County Sheriff's Department, all of the racist mob that perpetrated this violent murder, and anyone else involved should be prosecuted in absentia. This all should be put in the media, online newspapers, and TV news to show the nation this wickedness. James Bowens and his descendants rightfully should receive monetary compensation for the violent end to his human life, and the damage it has done to his descendants, plus 129 years of compounded interest." It says, "Below shows how I am a descendant of James Bowens through my great-great-grandfather, Charles Bowens. Look below at all of the Bowens, Bowens," and it's spelled two ways, B-O-W-I-N-S and B-O-W-E-N-S. And in parentheses, I have, "Because my ancestors were denied proper education, the spelling of the name vary." So, it says, "Buried in my family cemetery, Point of Rocks Color Cemetery, 1879, on Ballenger Creek Pike in Point of Rocks, Frederick, Maryland. And the descendants," and this shows the family line, "my great-great-grandfather, Charles Bowens, unknown birth year, he passed away in 1887. My great-grandmother, Eleanor Whalen Bowens, born in 1882, died in 1895. My great-grandfather, Charles O. Bowens, 1876, 1949. Edna Roberta Whedon Bowens, 1910 to 1948. Georgiana Bowens, unknown birth year, died in 1941. Hattie Bowens, 1888 to 1913. Helen M. Bowens, 1911 to 1927. Lula L. Hallman Bowens, 1885 to 1932. Raymond Joseph Bowens, 1915 to 1944. William Bowens, 1877 to 1945. And lastly, William Thomas Bowens Jr., he was a baby, 1943 to 1944. That's my family connection. All of those people are buried in my family cemetery." Says, "I was asked to give recommendations, you know, what should happen, any reparations." So, this is this part. It says, "Reparations is the act of mending, putting back in order, restoring to a sound, good, and complete condition. Let's please ask ourselves honestly and truthfully, in 1865, were any newly freed Negroes or colored folks mended, put back in order, restored to a sound, good, or complete condition? If anyone is having trouble answering these questions, the answer is no to them all. Our ancestors were freed with the rags on their backs, not a penny to their name, and they were told to pull themselves up by their bootstraps, by their former captors. But they didn't even have boots. The United States of America owes all of her superpower economic status to the inhumane institution The United States of America owes all of her superpower economic status to the inhumane institution of chattel slavery. So, when we talk about reparations to the descendants of enslaved people in the U.S., we need to understand that the entire U.S. economy, Wall Street, and many corporations and businesses today were created and profited from slavery and the value of a slave. We are owed reparations for many atrocities, not just the violent act of lynching, and all of the violent injustices are intertwined together. The descendants of James Bowens should. Now, I was asked to give my recommendations. First, in good faith, receive monetary compensation from the state and federal governments. This should be negotiated by the descendants and state and federal economists. Second, the descendants should receive free education, trade school, technical school, two-year college, or four-year university. Third, the descendants should receive state and federal tax-free status. Fourth, the descendants should be given free health care insurance. So, in closing, didn't know how I was gonna feel today either, brother. You know, you know, when you, when you think about it, it makes you angry. Makes you angry, you know. You know, it makes you angry on one hand, and then it makes you also feel bad for the people that was kind of perpetrating these things. Because what kind of hell were they living in that they had to treat other human beings like this? See, this is, this is what we need to address also, and this is what they need to address within themselves. You know, James Baldwin said it most plainly, "Why did you need a Negro anyway?" You know? Why did you need a Negro anyway? So, I just, once again, thank you for, to the Commission for doing this. You know, thank you for all of the descendants, all of our people here. Thank you for all of the white folks that are here, right? See, because in this country, unless all of us come together, nothing is gonna be fixed. You know, we heard about the people who just sat back and let things happen, right? And once again, let's go back to Nazi Germany. A lot of the Germans were good people. They were good people, but they just sat back. They said, "Oh, well, this'll be over," or "I'm just gonna wait a minute," you know. And we see what happened there, you know. And what happened here, you know, I'm not, I'm not downplaying anybody's tragedy, but this made that look like a Sunday afternoon, you know. So, thank you.
At the request of the Biggis family, we're gonna have Wahtu come up and speak for a short, brief time. He will speak.
This is, this is what I want to speak about largely. I was an early member of this committee here, steering committee here in Frederick, myself, Tina Allen, and Mara. We were instrumental in arranging for the soil collection. We went to the various sites where the victims were hanged, and we collected soil. And they were, the soil was transferred to jars, and the jars were eventually sent to the National Museum in Montgomery, Alabama. But that was a trip in itself, trying to get the cooperation from EJI. I had had some bitter conversations with them for their reluctance to support this committee here in Frederick. Many things have happened since that time, the courageous work and tiresome work that members of the committee, Tina Allen, would you stand up, Tina, please? You need to be recognized. Yes. And Mara, Mara Scott. Mara Page is not here. She's a white lady, courageous white lady, and she needs to be commended for the work that she did with this commission. But we were fired. Anyway, I won't go into that right now. That's why they putting this time limit on me, because I got a lot to say. But my main focus today is that I want to support the Biggis family. But there is a woman in Frederick County. Her name was Kitty. It happened during slavery days. Can you give me the date? Kitty was living in Emmitsburg. They're saying, they come out with a revisionist version of this, what I'm about to share with you. They come out with a revision, a revised version of it. Kitty was living in Emmitsburg at the time. We all know Emmitsburg. Most black people in here would say, "Well, why would a black person be living in Emmitsburg?" Yes. And, well, she happened to be living there, and she was enslaved by the sheriff department. The sheriff at that time, I think his name was Trundle. But don't hold me to that. But anyway, she was working for him as a slave, as a slave. It's not unusual. That area was, or was at the time, you have the Catoctin Mountain furnace up there. So, they had, they relied a lot on slave labor. So, we speculate that perhaps she came in the area as a result of the Catoctin Mountain. A lot of this information that I had today was shared with me by two genealogists in Frederick, Mary Mannix of the Frederick Seaboard Library, the Merlin Room, and Ms. Jane Ware. She's been very helpful to the Biggis family in getting information about John. But going with Kitty, Kitty expressed, expressed her dislike for the institution of slavery. That wasn't, that wasn't unusual. I mean, any black person during that time probably would have assisted her in her efforts to denounce slavery. But she denounced it to the point where she told her slave owner, "I don't like this job I'm doing. I don't like it at all." And she just, she created hardship for this man, made it difficult for this man to function. That's what I'm saying. So, her slave owner got with her and agreed to send her to his brother's plantation. They call it farms these days, but, yeah. But she decided, he decided to send her to the plantation of her brother, of his brother, which he did. And a week later, she was transferred back to her original owner, accused of burning down his property. She should have burnt down the entire town. But that's what we say, yes, she had every right to do that. Nobody, nobody had the right to own anybody then or now. But she did the rightful thing. And if I was alive, then I'd been in, I'd been up there striking the matches with her. Yes. The one thing where I come in, that we're in disagreement with my esteemed committee here, is that we posed, put before the Frederick City population, when we had the soil collection months ago at the Boys and Girls Club here in Frederick, we asked if the plight of Kitty should be included amongst those, because, I mean, the Merlin Commission is open about it, that they said that we had four victims in Frederick County, but there's been more. There's been more. But somebody let the cat out of the bag, and we found that one of those was Kitty. So, we asked the city gathering at that time if we should honor this woman. And they overwhelmingly said, "Yes, yes, yes." But the Merlin Commission said she doesn't fit the category of a lynching victim. She was given a trial. Now, like Mr. Freeland said, that how many, how many black people were, during that time, remember that black people could not testify against white people. Black slaves could not testify against, against a white person. So, what would it been like had she been in the courthouse trying to, trying to question, you know, white folks? She wouldn't have stood a chance. So, based on that, you know, we say that she had no right, she never got her due process. She never, she never was even considered for that. They sent her to the courthouse, the same courthouse where her brother, Biggis, and Mr. Bowens were convicted. And she was, she was given the verdict of guilty. Now, like I said, they're trying to revise this story that, that the gentleman here had, that wrote in the newspaper, and that we had got our information from. They're trying to revise it and shine up, saying that, saying that somebody has an opinion in Frederick, a schoolteacher. This is, this is a new version of black history, I believe, I believe. But she came, she's of the mind that Kitty was given a chance, you know, a chance at freedom. She was, she was given a choice. She was, she was given the choice to either go back into slavery or to go back into slavery. That was, that was one of the choices he had. What kind of choice is that? They said that some, they're trying to say that some nice people in Frederick, we know that, that Frederick is the home of Roger Brooke Taney. He wouldn't have been too nice to her. Uh, we know that what his verdict amounted to in terms of black people, he wouldn't have, he wouldn't have been kind to her. They said that she, she was given the government, governor of Maryland at that time was kind enough to, rather than to hang her, that committed her back to slavery, to be sold back down south. So that was a hell of a choice. So, um, upon being hanged, you know, you know, as the story went, we're saying that, uh, she went to those, she went to the gallery, galleries by herself. This black woman alone in a foreign country, around all these strangers. So we've, we avowed, we, as part of the local committee at the time, Remembrance Committee, said, she's not going to go, her, her memory, we're going to go to the galleries with her. This next time, you know, they have a trial or even the mention of her. She's got, she got, she got the support of at least the commission, Tina and Mara and myself. She's not going to, you know, be faced, faced these murderers by, by, by themselves, by herself. She's gonna, she's, she's gonna have to go across that stage, you know, with, with our support. She's gonna have us in her pocket. She's not, not gonna face her. I can imagine those, uh, I can imagine, you know, the Scott Keys and the Tanys. You know, just seeing the pictures of them. I can, I can imagine how this black woman would appeal, you know, just confronting them. But, you know, her memory don't, her memory, she can't, she can't visualize what it would have been like, her, her, her unfortunate situation would have been like had she turned around and seen Mara, Tina, and Wa Two in, in the, in the, because we'd have broke her ass out of there. Yeah. So, you know, I want to say that, 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 um, that, um, we're going to be, the organization that I work with here in Frederick, Sons of Reawakening, we're going to have a, a yearly award to the black woman in, in Frederick that stands up and fights against white supremacy and, and supports her community. Because that's what it is, is white supremacy that didn't want Tina up here to speak today. Is white supremacy that made a phone call down to Montgomery, Alabama that said that the meeting that we had, we were disrespectful to, to the attorneys on this committee. She can't, she can't be disrespectful as she tried. I can. I can, but it wasn't me. She was accused of it.
Mr. Wa Two, five minutes remaining, sir.
Yeah, I know. Right on cue. So, uh, so with, with that, I, you know, I want to thank you for listening to me, ramble on and on. And, and, uh, again, for the memory of, of Mr. Biggis and Mr. Bowens. And Mr. Carroll, yes. I thank you for listening to me today and I appreciate you being here.
Thank you, sir. Uh, so at this time, we have reached our intermission. Uh, intermission will be 10 minutes. We are doing our best to, again, finish our hearing at one o'clock. So please take a quick 10-minute break. Again, there are refreshments on the table. Uh, please partake as you would like. Thank you. Hearing, I would like to bring up, uh, Representative from Living and Growing. So again, they are here to help us navigate the emotional weight of everything that we have been bearing witness to this morning and this afternoon. I think we can all agree that it's been a lot. This is the necessary work. It is tough to hear, tough to listen to, and even tougher to make the connections to what's going on today. We acknowledge all of that. So it is important to make space for mental health. It is important to make space for emotional health. It is important to make space for social emotional health, because yes, we are human beings and we need each other. As much as we get on each other's nerves, we need each other. I know this, it's okay, it's okay. I love my wife, she gets on my nerves. I love my mother, she gets on my nerves. So, um, to ground us for the rest of our time together, I bring up Living and Growing. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Um, so as we're coming back into this space, you know, something that we think about, when we think about mental health, we're thinking about the head, right? But really, all that we're hearing and all that we're absorbing, we're also feeling in our bodies, right? There's a lot of emotion and there's a lot of ways that we carry things, both from today, from the past, generationally in our genes. And so just to get us grounded and, and kind of back-centered, um, I just want everybody to take a breath, kind of feel your body. Feel yourself in your chair. Feel yourself connected to the ground, to this sacred place that we are talking about today in Frederick. And take a breath in through your nose and release it through your mouth. And again, in through your nose and feel that fresh air, that fresh, fresh oxygen go all through your body and release whatever it is you need to release, right? One more time, bring it in and let it go. And just notice how your body feels now. Hopefully you feel a little more connected to your body, to yourself, and to this space that we're sharing. And please go back to that breath at any time that you need. And come find us if you want to talk. Thank you.
So we now, uh, transition with the continuation of our testimony to uh, the testimony of community members. Uh, and with that, I would like to recognize Tiana Masacqua to facilitate that portion of our hearing. Thank you.
I don't know if it's afternoon or evening or morning. What time is it this afternoon? Hello, family. Peace to you all. I appreciate the reminder to take a breath, but it's not really working for me. Um, I come from a tradition where we express anger, frustration, uh, pain, disappointment very vocally. And, um, I'm just thankful to be up here. I'm not talking about myself. I'm here to introduce some amazing members of our community who are going to speak to the importance of remembering and engaging with this history as a community. So first, I'd like to, um, just thank these individuals for their courage, because I know it's not easy. I know it requires a lot of processing. Um, and these three individuals have their own unique experience with race and terror um, in Frederick County. There is a teaching from the African tradition, it's called Mbuntu. It teaches us not to deny our past or our situation, even if it's painful. And tells us that we should accept without blind judgment either what has happened to us or what has happened to other people. It encourages us to, it encourages us to embrace all facets of life, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And allows us to be, accept what's here and now, and to embrace the help of others to work through it. So, um, as I introduce these speakers, I just want to say again, thank you. I thank you for your courage, um, and your willingness to share the good, the bad, and the ugly. First, I'd like to introduce Mr. Stephen Gordon. I've never said your first name, because you're going to always be Mr. Gordon to me. I was raised right. Mr. Gordon, thank you very much. Mr. Gordon came to Frederick in 1958 while serving in the Army and spent 19 months at Fort Dietrich. After he was discharged, he made Frederick his home. Mr. Gordon became active in the community by serving on numerous boards and organizations, organizations, excuse me, such as the HRC, ED, excuse me, ECDC. ECDC. Sounds like ECDC. United Way, Community Action, and others. He served as president and vice president for 20 years of the Frederick branch of the NAACP. Worked for Alpha and E S S R O C Cement for 32 years as a lab technician. He has been in transportation for over 50 years and the last 20 years as the owner of Gordon Transportation. Mr. Gordon is currently the vice president of Arch, um, that's here in Frederick. But I just want to say, um, I first met Mr. Gordon at a talk that he did at Hood College. It left me in tears, just hearing his experiences and his passion. So I thank you so much again, Mr. Gordon.
First of all, I'd like to say good afternoon to each of you and thank you so very much for taking the time on a Saturday morning to come out and witness this hearing. I was invited to, uh, lunch about three, four years ago uh, with a gentleman from the commission, Pete or something, not sure what his, uh, last name was. But I went to lunch with him and we talked about lynching. It didn't impress me very much at that time, because I was more focused on the modern day lynching that is occurring, was occurring then and still occurring. So I was not really impressed that much with, uh, talking about lynching that happened 100 years ago. However, today, I'm a little bit more impressed. Uh, again, I would like to thank, uh, the organization for inviting me to share a few words with you this afternoon. Uh, and thank Rose Chaney for sending me a list of things that I needed to talk about. Uh, in addition to that, when I came in, I found out that Mr. Brown was not able to be here. So Mr. Mahone asked me if I would speak a little bit about the Frederick News Post. Now, this is not to blacklist the Frederick News Post, but what he was telling me that back years ago, many of the subscribers for the Frederick News Post, uh, stopped subscribing to Frederick News Post and, uh, was getting the, uh, news, the post out of Hagerstown. Now, I know that some of the things that he was telling me are factual, because as president of the NAACP, we always had problem getting the Frederick News Post to print articles. Even if we submitted the article, we would pick up the paper the next day and the article would be entirely different than what we had, uh, presented to the News Post. That was one of the problem. But that, I, excuse me, I have a tendency to be hoarse in the morning time until I get to talking. So hopefully by the time I'm finished this, I'll be not hoarse again. But, uh, one of the things I had that I found out about reporters, reporters can be your best friend or your worst enemy. Let me repeat that. Reporters can be your best friend or your worst enemy. Back during the time I had a reporter stop by my home, which was not unusual, because he was al- always stopping by wanting to get a story. And this was no exception. But that was when, uh, we were, the NAACP was in the midst of the Brown versus Bender case. Some of you might remember that case. That was one of the biggest cases that we handled during my administration in the 20 years with the Brown versus Bender. Now, I knew this, I knew this reporter had worked with him on many articles. And, uh, he wanted to know what was going on with the Brown Bender case. And I said to him, you know, I really can't talk about it right now, because it's under investigation. Oh, you know, this is off the record. Well, I thought I knew the guy well enough that I could talk to him off the record. Guess what? Next morning, picked up the Frederick News Post. Everything that he and I had talked about off the record was now on the record, because it was in the Frederick News Post. So that was my downside with the Frederick News Post. So much for that, about the News Post. And Mr. Mahone, I have a tendency to be a little long-winded. So I have no trouble with you waving me off. And I'm going to try to get through all of these things that, uh, Rosa asked me to get through. But we've heard, we've heard a lot about lynching today. And I know that all of us are educated individuals and you know what lynching is. But if I'm going to talk to you, always look up the subject and make sure I tell you exactly what I'm talking about. So I, lynching is no exception. I did look it up to find out what lynching meant. And basically, I have two definition of lynching. Lynching is a form of violence which a mob under pretext are administered in justice without a trial. And that's what lynching is all about. And that's what happened to the three individuals that was lynched in Frederick. Now lynching is the public killing of a person who has not received any due process of law. These executions were often conducted by lawless mobs. Now, and I know Dean talked about the, uh, report from the NAACP. The NAACP done a, uh, study a few years back where they found that, uh, just in the United States, there was 4,734 lynching. And of course, we are fortunate and unfortunate, because one lynching is one too many. But we are, we're fortunate that we only had, uh, the three in Frederick County out of that 400 and, um, 4,000 and something. And let me just digress a minute and talk about, uh, a place in Carrollton, Alabama. Carrollton, Alabama, that's in Picking County. For those of you who have always lived up this end of the world and not familiar with Alabama, uh, there was a gentleman by the name of Henry Wells who was accused of a crime that he said he did not commit. And they was threatened to hang him. But what he said to them, if you hang me, I am an innocent man and I will never, never leave this courthouse. And that was in, uh, 1878. And I challenge you right now to go to your cell phone and look up, uh, Henry Wells. And you will find that Henry's image is still in the courthouse in Carrollton, Alabama. Now, how do I know that? Because I've been there. So I know he's, well, I shouldn't say I know that, because I've been there. But because it was, uh, 20 years ago when I was there. But the research that I done when I was getting ready for this, I found out that the image, that image was still there. They even had a hailstone that came through Carrollton. It knocked out all of the panes in that window, with excepting that one pane where Henry's image is. And that image is still there. So one of my concerns, one of my concerns is a modern day lynching. And that's what we've, uh, witnessing now, rather than being hanged from a tree, we've been murdered in different ways. And let's just talk about a few, if I can, please. I started out by saying, you might think that lynching is a disgraced barbaric act from the past. But it's still happening today. Young man by the name, 14-year-old man by the, young man by the name of Emmett Till is one that come to mind in 1955. Jane Byrd. Jane Byrd in 1968. Trevon Martin in 2012. Alma Arby in 2020. And who, who, but who could forget?
George Floyd.
Floyd. And I lost this, first George Floyd. Who could forget George Floyd also in 2020? And these are just a few of the people that was killed in the modern day lynching. While I'm sure that of the three persons listed in Frederick County, none of blood relatives. However, some of them could be related on my wife's side. And I just talked to the gentleman there and we went through the spelling of the last name of B O W E I N and I N. I N is the way my wife's family spell their name. So there's a possibility. But that would be as close as I could come to probably being related to anyone that was lynched. Because in my hometown of Alabama, I don't know of anyone that was lynched in Alabama, but I'm sure that there was many of them. One of the questions that Rose had on there, how can, no, let me go back to one of the other question because that was important. How could you define lynching to young people and why is it important? It's important for young people to know that of all three of those individuals that was lynched that we talked, that Dean talked about and others talked about, you did not hear him mention a trial at all. None of the three was given justice. And that's the important part for young people to know, that people was murdered who were probably innocent because they never went to trial. Let's go back to Emmett Till for just a second, if you will. This happened in 1855, about eight, 10 years ago, I'm not exactly sure how long ago. The person who made the accusation against him actually came forth and said it did not happen. Too late now, the man is, the young man is dead and buried. So it's too late to try to recount your statement. But that's what, that's what happened in that process. And the other question that Rose wanted me to address, what is the reconciliation? I don't know. And I heard, I believe Mr. Bowens that talked about what he thinks. I certainly would endorse what he, what his thinking is, but not being as close to it as he and others have been. I certainly want to stay kind of on the outside of that. But one of the things I think would be most beneficial for the, for the families of the individuals who was hanged, would try to get together with a dialogue group, have dialogue with the other side just to see where they are coming from. I believe that this would go a long ways towards healing the family of, because nothing is going to bring back Mr. Biggers, Mr. Carroll, or the other gentleman, nothing is going to bring them back. But sometime where you could sit down and talk about things in a dialogue group way, it have a tendency to kind of bring about a healing process. And I believe that's what would happen in this case. Rose also wanted me to talk briefly about, and I'll try and be briefly, talk briefly about the NAACP, local NAACP action with the Ku Klux Klan. And some of you have heard me talk about the Klan's in the past, but it might be worth repeating. NAACP got involved with a lawsuit to, because Frederick County issued a permit for the Klan's to hold rallies and we thought that that was the wrong thing for them to do. So we filed a complaint, filed a lawsuit. As a matter of fact, the jurors asked if we'd ever been to a Klan rally. The answer was no. Have you ever attempted to go to a Klan rally again? The answer was no. Would you go if you could? And the answer certainly was yes. Okay, so now we told the jurors that we would go. So on that given day, we decided that we would try to go to a Klan rally. And we attempted to go to the Klan rally. Of course, when we got to the entrance of the, where the rally was being held, we confront, we was confronted by a young man with a long gun on his shoulder and we was asked if we could go into the rally. And of course, the answer was no and probably added some more to it, but the answer was basically no. We could not go and after a long conversation with them, we decided, okay, now we approved our point, we can go back home. The very next time we got involved with the Ku Klux Klan, this has only been about 15 years ago. Frederick County Fair, the Great Frederick Fair, always have a demolition derby. And one of the demolition vehicles had a white cone on the top of it, which would indicate that he was a Klan member. So now we got to get involved with that. Had a gentleman who at that time was running for mayor and of course, he wanted to make sure that he showed some strength. And he called me up and want know, he told me what was going on and want know if I could go to the fairground with him and meet with the director of the fair. And of course, the answer is yes, be happy to. And of course, the bottom line is we was able to get that car disqualified from the demolition derby. a few years ago, became very friendly with the Grand Dragon of the Ku Klux Klan. And I'll just briefly talk about how that happened. I knew the name. I knew the name as being a member of the Ku Klux Klan or the Grand Dragon of the Ku Klux Klan. Also knew that name because I knew he was a union brother. And I had not met him and I walked into an established one and he was a security guard. And I noticed he was watching me as I walked in the door. He was watching me and I thought, you know, that's unusual, this security guard is watching me before I get into the store. He certainly has not stolen anything yet, why is he watching me? So when I exited the building, he stopped me, wanting to know if my name was Rosie. And of course, I said, no, my name is not Rosie. Why you ask? And I said, you thought I was Ro, what's Rosie? And of course, he told me what Rosie's name was and I knew Rosie as well as being one of the VPs at my international union. And I said, you know, what's your name? And he told me, and I won't repeat his name at this point, but he gave me his first name and then the last name, he kind of lowered his voice a bit. And I said, what was that last name again? And he told me again. And of course, I knew exactly then that he was my union brother and also knew that he was Grand Dragon of the Ku Klux Klan. And he and I became great friends. I'm not sure where he is now. He's not working security for that particular establishment anymore. But those are just some of the things that we got involved in. We tried to make life a little bit better for Frederick County, Frederick City during my 20 years of the NAACP. A gentleman by the name of Lord D. Nicken, God rest his soul. He was a very courageous and strong individual and he took me under his wings and we hopefully made life a little bit easier and a little bit better for all of those who came after us or still coming after us. And in closing, I have one desire, one desire. And that's as I leave this world, I can say that I left a better world for two little girls. Coco and Callie and the thousands of other Cocos and Callies out there. And with that, thank you so very much for listening to me. It's been a pleasure. Thank you for coming out.
The principle of Ubuntu tells us that we are only who we are thanks to other people. And as I called this wonderful woman up, I just want to say thank you for your great work as a coach in this community, also as another black basketball player woman. We had a wonderful month, March Madness. Ms. Ashley Bush from Frederick. Ashley Bush has, has a rich background encompassing athletics, education and organizational development. Ashley earned a bachelor's of science degree in psychology from Seton Hall University, graduating magna cum laude. That means she's smart, y'all. She later obtained a master of science degree in organizational psychology and development from Walden University. Ashley is deeply committed to community service. She co-founded two nonprofit programs, including Inertia and Power, which stands for Providing Our Women With Every, Everyone's Resources? Thank you. Additionally, excuse me, that organization is dedicated to serving marginalized black and brown youth in Frederick. Additionally, she serves, served as a human resource advocate for the Boys and Girls Club of Frederick County. Ms. Bush currently is a small business liaison officer for the Office of Small Business Programs at the Naval Air Systems Command in Patuxent River, Maryland. In this position, Ashley leverages her expertise to support small businesses and foster growth in the local community. But again, I know her as an amazing, outstanding athlete and coach. So yes, Ms. Ashley Bush.
James Carroll, John Biggess, James Bowens. Say their names. On behalf of the Frederick County Chapter, NAACP, I stand before you to provide a statement of witness that will hold the names of these three human beings in a sacred manner while eviscerating the United States Constitution, which ripped these men from its pages, denied them protection and blatantly ignored their humanity. The original purpose of the U.S. Constitution was to establish the framework for the government of the United States and to protect the rights and liberties of its citizens through the establishment of a stronger, more centralized government. The maintenance of order and stability, the promotion of unity and a national identity and for the protection of individual rights. But the protection of individual rights for who exactly? Many of us know the reality of this answer all too well. And the stories of James Carroll, John Biggess and James Bowens highlight the profound failures of the United States Constitution and the trickle-down justice system. In each case, fundamental principles of justice and civil liberties were egregiously violated, demonstrating systemic failures that allowed racial violence to go unchecked. First, there was a denial of due process. The Constitution guarantees the right to due process, ensuring fair treatment through legal proceedings. However, in all three cases, due process was completely disregarded. James Carroll, John Biggess and James Bowens were all accused of crimes without proper evidence and denied the opportunity to defend themselves in a court of law. Instead, they were intentionally judged and subjected to extrajudicial violence by mobs fueled by racial prejudice. Second, a violation of equal protection. The principle of equal protection under the law, as enshrined in the Fourteenth Amendment, was blatantly disregarded in these cases. All three men were targeted solely based on their race, facing accusations without adequate evidence and enduring violent retribution without the benefit of legal recourse. Their lynching exemplifies the deep-rooted racism and injustice pervasive in society at this very time. Third, there was a presumption of innocence ignored. Despite maintaining their innocence, James Carroll, John Biggess and James Bowens were presumed guilty solely based on accusations made against them. They were denied the fundamental right to be presumed innocent until proven guilty. Instead, facing swift and brutal punishment without the opportunity to present evidence in their defense. And finally, a failure to protect civil liberties. The Constitution is intended to safeguard the civil liberties of all individuals. Yet James Carroll, John Biggess, James Bowens were deprived of their most basic rights. They were denied the right to life, subjected to torture and violence and denied the protection of law enforcement authorities who failed to intervene and uphold justice. Additional criticisms the NAACP would like to address include the repeated failures implicating certain governmental and institutional entities such as law enforcement and the newspaper media across all three lynchings. The NAACP will submit a more detailed account of our noted criticisms, but for today would likely, would like to briefly review the criticisms of the law enforcement's leadership during each reported lynching. For instance, when James Carroll was dragged more than 200 yards from the train platform and to the woods to be lynched, Mayor Louis Mobley was on the train platform from the moment it arrived and provided an account of the mob's activities, but failed to intervene or summon any law enforcement personnel. In the lynching of James Bowens, there is no explanation for the absence of Sheriff Daniel Zimmerman. Sheriff Zimmerman was reported to be away at his Woodsboro Farm just outside of the city of Frederick with access to a telephone. And in the lynching of John Biggess, there is a clear case of the law enforcement failure and complicity. On the day before the abduction and lynching of Mr. Biggess, a lynch mob had gathered late at night and extinguished the streetlights near the jail in apparent preparation to overrun the jail and seize Mr. Biggess. The following morning, Frank Norwood, Frederick County State's Attorney, warned Sheriff Dur about the danger to Mr. Biggess and reminded Dur of his power to call extra men to guard the jail. Sheriff Dur reassured him that everything was quiet, but Sheriff Dur never called for reinforcement, even after the mob began hacking the door with an axe. Neither did Sheriff Dur nor his two officers fire a warning shot to deter the assailants and thus did absolutely nothing to pursue the mob once they had seized Mr. Biggess. It's important to note that Sheriff Dur had full capacity to protect the jailhouse because three days after the murder of John Biggess, Sheriff Dur convened a posse to help protect the jail upon hearing rumors that African-Americans were planning to storm the jail and seize an inmate. Mayor Mobley, Sheriff Zimmerman and Sheriff Dur were intentional in their failure to act. And as leaders of local law enforcement, it was their ultimate duty to protect and serve James Carroll, John Biggess and James Bowens. But instead, they allowed these men to be murdered. We have all laid witness to the uniquely crafted pursuit of inaction and inequity Lady Justice has afforded the black community. Its ultimate design to swallow each generation into a passive acceptance that we must first acknowledge and then actively and aggressively resist. We must channel our ancestral trauma and embrace James Carroll, John Biggess and James Bowens so we can unapologetically speak truth to power to protect our community. Bowens so we can unapologetically speak truth to power to protect our community. The tragic stories of James Carroll, John Bigas, and James Bowens serve as stark reminders of the profound failures of the United States Constitution and Frederick's local justice system. These injustices underscore the ongoing struggle for racial equality and justice in America, highlighting the imperative quest to address systemic racism and ensure that all individuals are afforded equal protection under the law. And although these lynchings occurred over 145 years ago, are we still not strange fruit hanging from those trees? Blood on the leaves, blood at the root, Black bodies swinging in the southern breeze. Strange fruit hanging from the poplar trees, a strange and bitter crop. We all, and I repeat, we all have a duty and obligation to James Carroll, John Bigas, and James Bowens, last names of many of my friends and family members that live here in Frederick County. We have a responsibility to act, to fight, to demand change. As a result, the Frederick County NAACP offers the following recommendations in three essential areas: law enforcement, education, and the implementation of a Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Currently, neither the Frederick County Sheriff's Department nor the Frederick City Police Department has African-American officers in their policymaking command staff positions. As such, African-Americans have limited input as to the actual operation of those agencies. This is a historical problem that calls for immediate change. Additionally, African-Americans in all communities should have direct input and actual voice concerning police operations, including hiring and discipline. The current Police Accountability Board programs need to be modified to give police victimized communities more direct input. The state of Maryland needs strong second look legislation to address generally documented fallacies and disparities in the criminal justice system and overall vilification of African-Americans. We also call for a mock trial for Sheriff Dur, as well as historical markings in a wrongful death action suit. The Maryland school system should incorporate the lynching history into its curriculum, and each local school system should do the same. As opposed to waiting on the state to incorporate the general lynching history, Frederick County Public Schools should move to forthwith to do an incorporation of the Frederick County lynchings. The impact of the lynchings was to traumatize the African-American community through actual murder and to convey that we have no standing under the social contract, the federal and state constitutions. The plight of the Frederick African-American community was not to be recognized and considered. Lynchings reinforced the concept that African-Americans were not whole persons, but rather property. The NAACP recommends a comprehensive investigation into the plight of Frederick County African-Americans, especially in relation to the governmental apparatus. But only by pursuit of truth can we arrive at justice, repair through reparations and And with these recommendations and commitments to action, you better believe the system will ferociously roar back in a mighty way. And yes, we will stumble, possibly trip, experience some sacrifices, and even take a few steps back. But we will, we will respond, and we will prevail. And to officially put white supremacy and those who tiptoe around it and use it for their benefit and solace on notice, here's a short letter to white supremacy. Dear white supremacy, I address you not out of fear or difference, but out of a profound sense of defiance and determination. You have long sought to oppress, marginalize, and dehumanize people of color, including those of African descent. You have justified your bigotry with twisted ideologies of superiority, perpetrating violence, discrimination, and injustice against those who deem inferior. Yet despite your efforts to instill fear and soul division, we stand resilient. We stand united in our pursuit of justice, equality, and liberation. We refuse to be silenced, intimidated, or broken by your hatred and your violence. We see through your lies and manipulation. We recognize the systemic inequalities and justices that you perpetuate, from institutionalized racism to economic exploitation. We understand the historical concept of your oppression, from slavery and segregation to modern-day mass incarceration and police brutality. But know this, your reign of terror will not last forever. We are the voices of resistance, the agents of change, the architects of a better future. We will not rest until every chain of oppression is broken, until every barrier to equality is dismantled, until every person of color can live free from fear and discrimination. We call upon our allies, both within and outside our communities, to join us in this struggle. Together, we will confront and challenge your supremacist ideologies. Together, we will build a society based on justice, compassion, and equality for all. In closing, let me be clear, your time is running out. We will not be intimidated nor subdued. We will continue to fight for our rights, our dignity, and our humanity until the day when your hateful ideology is nothing but a distant memory. Sincerely, Black America, the protectors of James Carroll, John Bigas, and James Bowens. Say their names. Thank you.
I don't know about you all, but I'm gonna need to go run after this, because I said the breaths don't do it for me. In preparing for this event, I had to reflect on my own family's history. I'm from the, my family's from the deep south, Alabama, Phoenix County, I think it's Phoenix City, excuse me, and the history that I had learned about, because I didn't want to get up here and, you know, give the wrong vibe, I guess I'll say. It's been incredibly, this has been amazing to watch Frederick go through this journey because I'm not from here. And when I moved to Frederick, it felt like, phew, I stepped back, stepped back into a time machine because you all were fighting battles that I felt like I've seen other communities already fight. This is not an easy thing to do, confronting reality and acknowledging the history. One of the resources I used to try to prepare myself was this book called Everyday Ubuntu. And it talks a lot about South Africa's history as they dealt with what they had experienced as a people. One of the people that I had a chance to get to know since I've lived in Frederick, oh, there she is, okay, is a wonderful woman by the name of Akia Billups. Okay, I may, I may get a little emotional. I've watched her since the pandemic. I've watched this woman from, since the pandemic, give tirelessly and serve tirelessly and step up and cheer. I've watched her be threatened. I have watched her be attacked for doing what we are trying to do here today, just acknowledge the truth and the history that Frederick County has. Akia Billups, born Akia Victoria Hall, is a proud native of Frederick, Maryland. She is widely recognized for her exceptional leadership in facilitating the June 5th March in 2020, which cost her family so much. That march brought together over 7,000 people here in Frederick. Drawing upon her own lived experience, I call her Kia. Kia inspired a movement within Frederick, driven by the energy and passion of so many young people she had standing by her. She has over 20 years of leadership and development experience across numerous industries. And I'm just gonna, I'm sorry, Kia, I can't read the whole thing. This is a powerful woman, and I've watched her serve, and I've watched her give, and I just hope that you all take something from what she has to say.
I told my neighbor, I was like, she bout to make me cry. So I thank you for having me. I thank you for this opportunity. Let me get back up here. My name is Akia Billups, born Akia Victoria Billups. Thank you for this opportunity. I will start with, I'm gonna be a little bit different. Everybody else has spoken. I'm gonna speak about my experience as a community because it shows how racism transcends. And so for me, how do we move forward? That's a question in 2020 I asked myself, and what I found was it took me back within my own family. So as I look at these descendants, I don't know if we're related. I know I'm a native of Frederick, but I know that we don't have enough conversations, or I don't know enough about my family history. But I know I feel it because I was raised under fear. I know when I drove around Frederick with a new set of friends, nobody from here. It took people that were not from here to see you need healing. This is not normal. I moved from place to place, still fighting racism. I did what people were telling me, and I still experience injury, economic. I had my first baby at 17. I walked across Urbana High School pregnant in front of a majority-white crowd that counted me out since Urbana Elementary. I got called my first N-word in the second grade. I'm not gonna look at Ashley because she was one of the first Black women, a little girl that I saw that was a part of a magnet program at Urbana. And then they sent me to West Frederick, and my, that was a shock. I wasn't black enough, and I wasn't white enough. And then they sent me back to Urbana High, and they did not accept me. I played basketball. I had a white coach tell me that my skin would never be light enough. How many systems have I shown you? A school system? I had parents experiencing joblessness from racism while trying to raise kids to do the best they could. And at 40 years old, I'm here to tell you that enough is enough because this racism that we're talking about is still felt. It's still very real. On 2020, I sat on a couch and watched a police precinct burn to the ground with my kids. And I asked, I made a joke, I said, let's make some popcorn because this needs to happen. It wasn't the fact, I'm a person that doesn't necessarily advocate, I don't advocate for harm. I knew nobody was in the building. Something has to change. And from that moment, 40 young people were lighting up somebody else's phone. And one family member asked, can you help us because this is dysfunctional, and I know that you have the skill set? So I need y'all to know how I showed up. I just showed up as a person to use my skill set. And what this community did was hurtful. I had a community that was pulling me in every direction. We will use people. When I got asked for the young people, I said, I'm not asking these young people. We're hurting them. Those young people were followed. I had to step in front of a 16-year-old at the sheriff's office and got assaulted. The hurt is still real. When I share that with my father, he shares his own share of experience. We're passing it down generationally. So I know we're talking about 100 years past, but I can catch you up to today. I just had to tell a white person, when you get uncomfortable, that does not mean that you can say whatever because you're inappropriate. We don't want to teach the filter. And what I am finding is that you're trying to pull on people that are already tired. And what I found is nobody came to help when I lost opportunity, when people put my information online, when I had to get new locks and security because I work from home and I can see somebody stalking my house. So when we say civil liberties, I am just a community member, and I'm just here to share my experience with standing up for justice. So when you see limited people in rooms, you understand that there's a real person behind this work. I was working full-time for a pharmaceutical company, showing up full-time for justice. And I will tell you that this is my second time out in two years, and every time I come out, I hear the same thing. Where you been? Taking care of myself. Taking care of myself. And that's what I advocate for, too. So while we do this work, that is very important. I love that we have mental health here. I advocate for Black maternal health and youth development, and when we're writing grants, I advocate for mental health to be written in. Doing this work is hard, and we're not all equipped, but we all can do it and we all need to do it. So why not equip? I find that there's a lot of dysfunction, and I also find when I sit in rooms and say this, I get silenced still. Maybe I don't have enough degrees and things behind my name, but again, the change that you're asking for, this is what it looks like. But I'm telling you, I'm showing up in some of these circles and I'm starting to see some systemic issues that are still dividing us, and that I think is very important to bear witness to in this moment because I don't want anybody to mistake my absence with my passion. But I too am raising kids. I too am married and have a family. I too am still raising kids in Frederick County Public Schools that's still being called the N-word, and the only thing they could offer me was a transfer. Why does my child have to get uprooted? Because you guys can't fix this issue. And what I found in the community is it's a trend. I started to see that. How do we, how do we fight for that? How do I fight a system that my child's still in? These are all questions. This is why, this is why this transcends. 100-plus years later, all I hear is people calling on a generation for their energy, but we're inflicting pain, and all that's gonna do is keep us in a cycle. And so I love that we're going back. That's what this means. How does it transcend? We go back and we talk about it. We start talking about it in our families. We start talking about it with our friends. We start holding people accountable, and we also slow down. My experience is mine, but I will tell you, at one rally, we showed up at the end of that sheriff rally that day, let me, let me, because I just remembered, at the end of that sheriff rally, it was about a group of 17 of us. They ended up, we ended up in a circle praying and talking. You can say, we were advocating for what, police brutality and advocating for awareness, and we had what could have been considered a political opponent and people there opposing us. We all came together, and I think we can hear that theme. I don't see us doing this work separately. We have to do it together. We have to heal a community because more people are coming in, but what took place here has to be healed in order for this to be fruitful ground. In order for Frederick to heal, we need to address it. We need to take the time to allow people to process it, and that means when older people are speaking, yeah, they may talk, but how long have they been silenced? I'm not even talking about respect or, think about it, empathy is what I'm saying. You're gonna have older people that are gonna talk if we're true to do this. And as a younger generation, we need to listen and also give them their moment because if I know what 40 years feels like, I can only imagine. And I will say it because I tried to incorporate my own lineage in this, and I called my dad and I asked him some questions, and he just said, we were told to put our head down. We were told to push past, and he got off the phone. I don't want to put my head down anymore. I don't want to push past, I want to push through. And so I wanted to share my experience here, to say that, to add to everything that was said, to say that, yes, time is up. Healing takes place, people are ready to work, and, and I'm looking forward to getting reconciliation for these three families and Frederick County, so that we can heal and build a healthy, thriving community. Thank you.
So I thank you to the representatives of Frederick County, the people of Frederick County, for sharing your truth. Thank you, Tiana, for facilitating that process. We are grateful for the truth that you've expressed in this moment. Uh, thank you all for bearing with us, I know we are over time, but this is important. So thank you for, for giving us that grace and that flexibility. Um, at this time, we will now transition to our public comment. Uh, this has been the opportunity for, uh, those in person and those online, uh, to share any thoughts. Uh, if you do have, uh, a few words that you would like to say, they can be shared with, uh, Trish, Trish, if you can raise your hand, uh, and Hannah, if you can also raise your hand. This is just, uh, again, an opportunity, uh, to allow for as much of this as possible, again, being mindful of time. However, I do want to, uh, make special space, uh, and in this process, we learn. Uh, we do not come to this hearing session in finality of everything that we know. Uh, as has been expressed by many people this afternoon, the work continues. So even after I say we are done for today, the work continues, and I thank you all for your commitment to the fight, to the commitment for justice. So if you will, uh, give me a little bit of, of flexibility and latitude, I would like to call up, uh, someone who connected with the MLTRC, and it is very important that we continue to say the names and also acknowledge the humanity. I am grateful for the representation of the Biggess family. I am grateful for the representation of the Bowens family, and I would also like to, uh, make space for representation from the Carroll family. So with that, uh, we'll get to that.
Kitty's family, yeah.
We'll get to that, sir, thank you. Uh, so with that, uh, Ms. Claggett, if you would, uh, please join us. This way, ma'am, thank you.
When you put your hand up, your blood pressure goes up, that's the way I feel right now. So I've been doing family history for about 50 years, and when I saw this invitation, and it's something historical, and I'm very interested in history and, and not just history, but black history as well, my fourth great-grandfather, I learned who he was recently, my father's side of the family is African-American, um, and we have wiped it out over the last generation, but I saw the name Carroll, and I wondered if that was my stepfather's family and Shanta, where she, oh, there she is. And I talked, and she couldn't connect, and I did a little bit more informa, um, research, and I couldn't quite connect, but my most recent, um, check online, I found that there was no connection for James, no descendants for James. And, you know, I looked at the date, and I realized this Tuesday is going to be 145 years since he was lynched, and it really kinda made me sad that, um, I mean, it was just a sad situation. I, there was five witnesses that were interviewed, and not even one of them could admit that they recognized anybody, they looked familiar, but they didn't recognize who they were, except the child that bothered me. He said, I knew the child, I knew he was the one that climbed the tree and threw the rope over the limb, and helped, helped, they helped pull him, James, up as they hung him. And he told a gentleman, when he asked if you were that child, he said, no, I don't even know, but hell no, and you might as well just forget, uh, you can go to hell before I give you an answer. And I thought how sad it was for our parents still today to teach racism, and, and it is taught, there's, there's no two ways about it. I, I learned it from my grandparents, who wouldn't raise me when my parents separated, and it, it's just really sad. So I felt the need to say James Carroll's name as, just as a representative, and I feel a kinship to James, nothing more, nothing less, it's just that his name needed to be said. So thank you for your time, and have a great day.
Do we have other people who would like to make public comments?
To make clear, before we come up, sir, uh, for anyone else that wants to make all the comment, again, we're asking you if you can share those comments with either Trish or Hannah, this is only to be mindful of time, so sir, if you could just be, again, uh, short with your time, please, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Humble to be in the presence of these amazing people in this history, I mean, it's just overwhelming. I just wanted to say very briefly that my mother was a Holocaust survivor, and you were talking, I think, Eric, you were talking about Germany and how they recognized what they did, and it's true, you go to Berlin, it's like an open-air museum with all of this, uh, here was the Gestapo building, all of that. I still don't have it in my heart to, you know, forgive the Germans, but, you know, they have done that, and you're so right, it has to happen here, and it has to happen in Frederick, and so what you're doing today is so beautiful, and I'm here to be of help in any way I can, but, you know, we have to stand up and be there for, and, and, and expose that history and share that history, and this is a way of loving America, is to share that history. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Hannah, Trish, have any comments been shared with you, uh, any online? Just want to make space for any, uh, online participants who have shared comments. Okay, uh, well, thank you for that. So, uh, as we begin to close, uh, our hearing for this afternoon, I, uh, make a motion that we accept the testimony, uh, the information, the truth that has been presented to us this morning and afternoon.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any opposed, any abstain? Okay, the testimony from this hearing has been, uh, accepted. Uh, so as I briefly close, again, thank you so much for the extra 46 minutes that you gave us. Um, I hope it has not been a waste of time and energy. We are truly grateful for, again, the presence, the truth, the vulnerability that has been expressed in this sacred space. We know that it is not easy for any of us who involved in this work, let alone those who are directly connected to the history. As I have reiterated and will continue to reiterate, the work goes on. Uh, the end of the commission in June 30 of 2026 is not the end of the work around racial terror lynching in the state of Maryland. We very much hope and aim to set precedent with the work that we are doing on this commission. We know, this doesn't happen very often, we know this is a golden opportunity, we know that we can't screw this up, uh, because other places, other states, other regions of this country need to confront this truth, because only in confronting the truth can we begin at any semblance to approach healing. And ultimately, to the descendants, I hope that in some way possible, and I am not gonna be naive, we have provided some space of healing, it's just some. The work continues, the healing continues, the justice continues, the reparations continues, all of that continues, and that is very much our charge as a commission to bear witness and to tell the truth to those who have the power to reconcile, truly have the power to reconcile, and I honor the fact that it starts within all of our spaces. Uh, I encourage you, don't wait for us, and that doesn't mean we won't do our part, but the work has been started. It started yesterday, it started yesterday upon yesterday. So I am thankful for those who are in this fight, who are in this work, who are truly guided by justice, who are truly guided by truth, who are truly guided by healing. I am grateful for the concept of Ubuntu, so thank you again, Tiana, for uplifting Ubuntu. I am because we are, and because we are, I am. I will also uplift Sankofa, reaching back to move forward. Those who do not know their history are doomed to repeat it. We know this in so many iterations and so many manifestations. So if nothing else, we declare the truth, we declare the reality, so that people can not just see what it really is, but also be compelled to address it, to do their part with whatever time they have on this planet, to make it better than it was before. And for those that you have in your family, sir, I say my children's names, Cruz Matisse and Valentina Marie. I do it for them. I do it so that my mother's life and her fight for justice has not been in vain. I honor my parents, my grandparents, my ancestors, many whose names I will never know, because for them, because of them, I am here, and I will not waste this life not fighting for justice. I know no one on this commission, those who are in our presence, and very quickly, if I may, just to honor all of our commissioners, uh, who are joining us, so, uh, to Iris Barnes, to Simone Barrett, Michelle Coles, Roger Davidson, Maya Davis, Tysha Dupree Wilson, Chris Haley, get well soon, Chris, Elizabeth Hughes, Carl Snowden, Marshall Stevenson, and Stephanie Seur, their lives will not be wasted, um, for the work that they have done on this commission. We know the history that we are setting, we thank you for being a part of the history, thank you for making this space sacred. Uh, much love to Maryland Lynch Memorial Project, Will Schwartz, thank you for being in the place, thank you for all those who have followed our journey and will continue to follow our journey, uh, for accountability, for justice, for peace, and ultimately, for love. We do this for love, maybe that word didn't come up enough, but I'm gonna leave you with that, we do this out of love, because love takes its time, love knows the place, but ultimately, love wins. Thank you all, I appreciate you, thank you for being here.